Honey.
I can't hear anything.
Me neither.
At least you could hear me.
How about now?
Yeah, I could do you now, Lou.
Okay. Okay, that was that thing. Alright. Thank you. What I was saying was, is that uh when there are volunteers here to present, I usually take them first, and tonight we have the Committee for the Environment here. It's like the majority of the committee is here. And they are going to present about a village greenway project that they've been working on, and they have some information to present to the public and to the Board of Trustees. So Kate, are you gonna do the presentation? Okay, please avail yourself of the mic.
You can organize what we give you. It's up on the backup, but it there's a lot, so you're gonna need hard. To follow along. They're slippery. Okay, and and then I did not number the pages, so you know, you're gonna have to be very alert.
Thank you.
And this is a, so that is a sort of a table of contents to help you find you know, be clear what we're what we're looking at, okay? And so I have some others. And you know who this set? Yes, that you know, you don't be engineer.
Dan, do you have this electronically?
Yeah, it's gonna be up on the screen.
Yeah, once they start making their presentation, I will share the share my screen answers.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't get that.
Yeah.
I didn't get that.
Oh, wait.
No, no. Kate, we want one more. We're missing one more of the. Yeah, you missed me. I'm sorry. It's okay. Thank you.
Good. Make it bigger for the old guys, like me.
Okay, so.
Okay, let's begin.
Good evening, Mayor, and we thank you for letting us present this team tonight. I'm David Freeman, Chair of the Committee for the Environment. One of the major accomplishments of our committee this year is the development and promotion of the idea of Mamarone Greenway. It is not a new idea. Various versions of this idea have been around and have actually appeared in the village's comprehensive plans as far back as the mid nineteen eighties. And it's specifically recommended as something to consider in the newly enacted twenty twenty-three village comprehensive plan. But for some reason, this great idea has never gotten real traction. As we haven't actually moved forward to implement it as a as a village. But we hope that that's about to change. I'd like to spend a couple of minutes tonight describing what the Mamarone Greenway is and why it's important. And then I'm gonna hand over the mic to Kate DeHaze, Chair of the Committee's Open Space Subcommittee, who will fill in the details and get specific as to what we're asking the board to do tonight. So the Mamarone Greenway, as we envisioned it, is a string of best pocket parks along the Mamarone and Shell Drake rivers. Many of the stream banks.
I'm sorry, that's me. I'm sorry, give me one second. Okay. Thank you. It's good thing we have somebody under thirty here. Go ahead.
Technical support is always.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So many of the parcels along these streams are used fully either by the village or by the county. But they are currently in terrible repair, and the slide that Kate has will show you some of the problems that that you will see if you walk along these streambanks, as the committee has done. The parcels are overrun with invasives. They're cluttered with litter. Streambanks are eroded. There are culverts that are broken and silting other foreign materials into the streams. And the land is really inaccessible to the general public. The idea of the Greenway is to rehabilitate these parcels, clearing them of invasives, clearing them of overgrowth, repairing the culverts, contouring them so that they actually hold water when water comes through them, planting them with native plants which will be a habitat for pollinators and creating walking trails, so you could actually walk from one end of the park to the other. There are some privately owned parcels which will have to be either bought or taken by eminent domain or at least having easements obtained. So that's a little complicated. But at the end, we envision basically a walkable park like the High Line or like the Belt Line. Where you can walk the entire length of the Mamarone and Shell Drake Rivers in the village, and hopefully connect with similarly similar parks in Harrison, the Tanlin River, and the Leatherstock Trail in the village of Warshorn. Why is this important? Well, first of all, and and there are a couple of really very positive things that 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 this park could do. First of all, recreation, obviously. This is open space. This is open space. Particularly in areas that community don't have open space. Don't have places to replicate. If the the portions of the rivers that that are not overgrown and in terrible repair are actually quite pretty. And you could have a, you could actually spend a very nice day walking this park when it's finished, if we can rebuild this off. It would be a habitat for native plants and and pollinators. But very importantly for this community, it would serve an important flood control function. There are plenty of studies that show that a well-maintained stream bank, a well-contoured stream bank, when it's planted with the right plants, acts as a sponge when floodwaters, when heavy rains come through. These parcels do not do that right now because they are in terrible shape, and they are not planted properly, they're not contoured properly. They're actually contributing to the problem rather than helping solve. So we think that that there is, this is a win-win. If we can do it. And we can do it. And we play a major role. The good news is that there is now money available for this kind of project. We've been looking very hard at what kind of grant money is available. This is potentially expensive. We don't want, and we don't think that the village residents should be at the brunt of this cost, but since it is a flood control project that serves the entire area, we believe that it qualifies for a variety of grants under the Long Island Sound Study, under Climate Leadership, through Echnak. It was a four point two billion dollar bond act that was passed two years ago by the state. It's a Federal Infrastructure Act. We think we can be creative in terms of finding funds that will largely pay for this, or at least pay for a significant portion of it. With that, I'd like to turn the mic over to Kate, who had been spearheading our efforts and has a lot more detail and also has some specifics as to what we're asking the board.
Hey, thank you so much, everybody. So I'm Kate DeHaze from the Committee for the Environment. And I, you know, put most of what I have to say into this handout, so we'll just walk our way through it. So the the first page, I've given you a table of contents because I did not know the list, and you know, there's a little going back and forth, but I don't want you to get lost. Hopefully that will help you. So on my first page, I'm pretty much reiterating what David said. What are we trying to do here? You know, the the LWRP, you know, identifies the the rivers as tremendous resources, and they haven't really been treated that way, but they are. They're a resource in many, in many ways. They are a resource for our our community to have passive recreation. They're a resource as ecologically for bird life, wildlife, and so forth. It's also known that wetland soils actually absorb carbon and hold carbon that might not be the concern of people that live in Mamarone, but it's a bigger concern, and it's a concern of, you know, and some of the entities that are offering money as far as climate change is concerned. And then more and more, it's understood that like, as David mentioned, floodplains and so forth are green infrastructure, that they absorb and filter stormwater, that they provide stormwater storage during a flood event and so forth. So the first page, Mamarone Greenways, if you don't have a handout, it's on the back up. You can look it up there. Basically, sort of lays out the big picture because we're covering a lot of geography here, so it's, you know, it's kind of, if you don't know the all the ins and outs of where the rivers are, this, you know, might not be obvious to you. So that's page one, and on the back of it, just a handy reference, this is a, this is floodplain data from Westchester County. The the orange is the hundred-year floodplain, the red is the five-hundred-year floodplain. Just, you know, this is what we're, this is where we are. This is what we're in. We are all in the floodplain here. And that's where we're operating, so we're very, very aware of that. The other page is, this is an extract from the LWRP, which, for those of you who are not familiar, this is basically the 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 plan that was written for the coastal and river, you know, the coastal plain, and that includes the rivers. It's written in nineteen eighty-five. And it name checks all the, all of these spots, including the Rockland Pocket, and that's why we started there. We use this as support, the Rockland Pocket as an entryway to to the river. And it talks about the various sites along the Shell Drake from, they call it the the throughway, the Shell Drake Throughway Pocket up to the Salt Shed and Bub Walker Park. So that's that's worth noting, and it's also important because New York State, this is a New York State approved plan that was approved long ago. And so it has, it has a course. This is actually what the Harbor Coastal Zone looks at when they do their consistency recommendations, so it has, it has importance, and the fact that at least a portion of the project that we're discussing is in there is is very useful, so I'm so I'm told, okay? So now what we have is there seems to be a page missing. Oh, no, it's on the back. Okay, so there are three detailed maps. And the maps, these these areas, we have walked with our community. We have studied them. We have worked in these areas. We know them very, very well in and out. So that's what I'm gonna be, that's what I'm gonna be referring back to when I take you through some of the specific sites that we're looking at. So so beginning with the southwest map, the first map there, you'll see site number one, which is a tiny little thing. That is the Rockland Pocket Preserve that we we completely, almost, well, almost completely, we can get a little help here and there, but mostly with volunteer labor, and if you, anybody knew it, it was completely overgrown. It was a mess. It was full of garbage. It was full of broken glass. It was a disaster. We got the invasives out and we put in up, it's, you know, I don't know how many. I I could say thousands, probably is. Oh, yeah, Jen says thousands. She was down there. We did the work. Everybody here did the work, you know, digging this stuff out, planting trees, and you know, so that is the gateway that is as described in the LWRP. And if you look at the next, this page, your first page, calls Rockland Pocket Preserve. There are some photographs what it looked like on day one before we started working. You know, what it looked like in the spring. You can see the the milkweed. You can see the pinston in blooming. You can see the oak trees that were planted there. The sign that was put up in the summer that was actually designed by my husband, and and then it was fabricated by the village. A view of the Shell Drake, which is absolutely stunning. I took some friends down there. Is that it? I took some friends down there who lived in Mamarone for twenty years, like right in the neighborhood, you know, live in my neighborhood. They were like, oh, my God, I never knew the river was here. It's so pretty. It's so gorgeous. So it's opening that up. And there's a picture of the of the pathways with stone laid out along it. And I will just say that since I have, since this has been done, and I go down there pretty often, I don't see littering like we saw before. There's a little bit of stuff that blows up, but not much. I see Vincent's, that bed trucks pulled up, and they're like hanging out, you know, on the bench, having their lunch. You know, it, lots of neighbors coming by. It's being used and it's being appreciated, so that's where we're at. And now at the bottom right, there's a picture of a crosswalk. And that is a picture of a crosswalk in Rye to the people that walk along the Playland Parkway, and so we're gonna need a few of them. Because if we're gonna have people walking along, there's places where you have to cross the river, I mean, across the road. And so we'll need that. So if we flip over, you're gonna see the Rockland and the Shell Drake Bird Walk, okay? And on this one, I'm gonna have hats off to Lou because he went with me and a few other people in, on a very cold day in December.
Quite the adventure.
What?
Quite the adventure.
You know, we had an adventure. And we scrambled around down there, so so I've kind of mapped it out. Now, if you look at, if you look at the the page of pictures, everybody with me here, we, okay? The risk, it's called Rockland Shell Drake Bird Walk. That's what we're calling it. And on the little map, you'll see I've got a crosswalk there because we want people to cross to cross Rockland and go down in there. And by the way, that wouldn't be a bad idea for the school kids and whatnot that are crossing there either. So it's pretty steep. You've got to get down there. If you look at picture one of the bird walk, that is a view from the town of Mamarone on the shore of the town of Mamarone, looking back up at the bird walk. It's very flat in the town of Mamarone. It floods there. And you know, it's an overflow space. It was very wet, but if you can see in that picture on the Mamarone side, it's steep. So part of what we would propose is to lower the bank there to let water flow into the interior space more easily. It's a wetland, but the walk, because of, you know, various things, the water doesn't go there real easily. There's a pic, picture two is a picture of the interior space. So you get the idea that what would happen there would be it would be a park, you know, it's a, it's a, you know, bird, bird sanctuary with with walking paths and so forth. But it would also be overflow space. It does flood, but the water would go in there more easily, and I think that would be beneficial for the village. Also, what's growing down there isn't all the the best. There's a lot of knotweed. There's multiflora roses and things. Here's a picture of a beautiful tree that's completely covered with a vine. So, you know, we get the vines off, and that would be part of the restoration. And there's a picture of me standing with the people from Audubon looking at the wood ducks and so forth, which was very excited about the wood ducks. And so, and they, and to whatever extent Audubon can partner with signage and that kind of stuff, they're very excited to do that. Okay, so let me see here. I hope this isn't, this, you know, we may run out of time, but you'll see. So on the back of that, it's the Shell Drake Walkway. So let's look back at our map in case we're getting lost. Our map is the make sure I better here.
Mamarone Greenways.
Yeah, it's it's the southwest map, so we're spelling the southwest map. So if you look at four on the southwest map, the southwest map, basically, from the Rockland Pocket, as you go towards Fenmore, the village owns the land along the river there and the street. There's quite a bit of space there. There is parking and what have you, but it could certainly be reconfigured. Then there's three buildings behind those buildings that is not village-owned, but there's nothing back there. It's just blank wall. And so they could probably be persuaded to do an easement. Then there's another chunk of village land. You see the end of Ogden Street. Ogden Street is referenced in the LWRP as a site that should be a little pocket park. And so that, there's a picture of it here. If you look at the Shell Drake River Walkway, picture one is a view looking across from the, from Fayette. Picture two is taken during the flood of a few months ago. And you'll see it's completely full of water. And on all the trees, there's water up to their trunks. They don't care. They're fine. Water comes, they absorb the water, water goes down, they're good. And the the next two pictures is the end of Ogden, which I'm sorry to say is a mess. It's super eroded, you know. There's, it's, it's not a good situation. There's a lot of parking. And even there's a village-owned lot behind Save-A-Tree. It's full of cars. It's full of a lot of stuff that really should not be there, but in any event, we need to recuperate that for the people that we own it. Let's make it nice, right? And I think a little pocket park there would be great at the end of Ogden. It's a couple of benches and so forth. Continuing along, again, mostly village land as you go up. There's one, another little lot there behind one of the buildings. And then it's, you know, Blondie's Treehouse and all the rest of it that you're familiar with, village-owned land. There's some encroachment. Now, we get to the the intersection, the corner of Fenimore. And I didn't put this in my original, you know, when we did our original walk because it seemed like too big of an ask. But that's the salt shed. And so I would propose, so there's a diagram of the salt shed park. And I would propose that, and there's pictures on the back, that let's just say that's an inconsistent use, you know, that's not a good use. Now, I understand it's, the village pop needs that salt, and it's hard to find a place to put it. But if you look at the pictures, that's a picture of it. It's pretty degraded along the, along the edge, and then it's mostly parking. You can see picture number two on the right there, how the water flooded into the whole area. I took these on like around noon or so on the twenty ninth of September. That's standing on the the bridge over Fenimore, looking back at the salt shed. The whole place is full of water. And if you look at the third picture to the left there, you can see the water is right up against the salt shed, and it's leaching salt into the river, and there was tons of other stuff there, gravel and you know, all the car, truck, you know, pollution and so forth. And so, you know, we we propose and, you know, I look at that parking lot, by the way. If you look at the picture, it's not super, super heavily used. There's some trucks in it, but it's, I I don't know who's actually parking there. It's convenient, but you know, I think the village needs that space. The water needs somewhere to go. So it's like, this guy wants to park his car? Okay. You know, how about I don't want to get flooded, you know? Let's let's put those things in the balance. So so if you look at the design, this is just, you know, this is just sketchy stuff. We would basically, you know, take about half the parking lot. We create a vegetated berm to to keep all that salt and pollution out out of the area, out of the river. We'd lower it. We'd put in a crosswalk so people can get across to Bub Bub Walker Park. And the bottom line is the Shell Drake water needs a place to go. And I actually haven't measured the whole thing out, but we could quantify how much water would be stored there, would be held there, and would filter into the ground in that location, which would be significant. And again, I've got a picture of a crosswalk, and that is an incredibly dangerous place to cross. All of Fenimore is. And I would just like to say that when the Witherley Bridge goes and when Center Avenue goes, the pedestrian bridge, all the kids and people that live on that side of Washingtonville that go towards the high school and go towards wherever they go are gonna have no way through unless they go all the way around. So they're gonna be coming and using Bub Walker Park. Okay, that is a transportation corridor for pedestrians and kids on bicycles. So you you really need to put a decent crosswalk like the one in Rye with good, or like the one we've got up on Fenimore now. So I put that out there. Okay, I hope I'm going fast enough for everybody. Any questions so far?
Keep plowing ahead.
Okay, plowing ahead, plowing on. Okay, more more pictures. Next one. Plaza, so it's titled Plaza Walkway to Columbus Park. That corresponds to nine on your diagram. So I'm not saying anything about Bub Walker. Bub Bub Walker exists. You know, it's probably gonna be messed with a little bit, you know, by the Army Corps or what have you, but it's there. But so we gotta come through, and we've got to get over to the Mason, that walkway along the Mason. Here's a picture of Plaza again on September twenty ninth. It's completely flooded because, as you know, the Shell Drake is extremely narrow there. It has, the water has nowhere to go, so it goes on to Plaza. I've heard some talk, I don't know if this is how solid this is, of turning Plaza into a one-way and widening, letting the river be wider. I think that's a really good idea because there aren't that many options of things to do. But, you know, we would certainly, you know, have our walkway continue there, whether it's on New Riverbank, on a wide river, whether it's on the sidewalk, what have you. We come down now to into Columbus Park. So again, more flood pictures. The one on the right is viewed from Station Bridge at the Confluence, looking towards Van Rans. And you know, you know, you you have different reactions to it. I said, all right, the Columbus Park is doing what it's supposed to do because it's floodplain of the Mamarone and Shell Drake Rivers at the Confluence. It's taking the water. It's absorbing the water. The problem is, it's not enough. And that's why you see it flooding into Van Rans. In the next picture, flooding into those those buildings there. So, you know, again, you might want to take this into consideration. There is some open land around there, you know, that's some, you know, slated for development, slated for apartment buildings, slated for god knows what. You know, I think we need more green space and we need more places for floodwater to go. And on the bottom right, so this is a picture of the Shell Drake viewed from the footbridge in Mamarone in Columbus Park. And the invasive vines are like pretty, pretty out of control. And they're, they're hurting the mature trees. There, there weren't native plants that were planted there. They're killing those. And and then also, they are, look, look at how much it's encroaching in the waterway. They impede the flow of water under the best of circumstances, and they also trap everything. They trap all the garbage. They trap the debris. They trap the logs. So it's a major issue. So as part of the Greenway proposal, there's gonna be a maintenance piece to it. There has to be a plan in place as we're putting a plan in place for Rockland whereby the 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 riverbanks themselves are gonna be tending, and the invasive vines and knotweed and what have you is gonna, is gonna be removed and kept under control. That's extremely important. And it actually, it's an argument in favor of the Greenway. So this is Columbus Park. It's been a little neglected. But you know, but but you'll see in a few other areas, you know, why this can be important. So this, the next page is new park, green infrastructure, Jefferson Avenue Parking. So you all, everybody's seen this. We've talked a lot about it. Tony and I brought it to this board quite a while ago. It was brought to the Army Corps. The Army Corps has said they are, they are down with this. This was, and actually, interestingly enough, the SLR report is, Kate, like we said, let's save all the parking because you, you know, we can't lose parking and found a way to keep the parking. The SLR report says, lose the parking, make it park. It needs to be floodplain. So, you know, that's what the the board can decide how they want to handle that, how much parking, but I said, okay. So, you know, that's what the, the board can decide how they wanna handle that, how much parking. But I said, okay. So I took out half the parking. And I go down there pretty often. And I count the cars, okay, because what else do I wanna go out to do in my free time? And you know. You know, it's like about half full. So if you got rid of half the parking, at least by what's happening now, you'd have enough space for it. And you know, we've talked about this a lot already, so. But this is, you, this is the confluence. This is kinda the central piece of the whole thing. You're gonna make new park. And um. Uh, and you're gonna handle a fair bit of floodwater too. This is more or less, you know, anyway, leave that there. Um, and here's some, on the next page, expanding Columbus Park, making green infrastructure. So we're on the central map, by the way. We, we skipped maps. We're now on the central map. Um, expanding Columbus Park and making green infrastructure. Um, here's a picture of a boy and his dad fishing right by the Jefferson Avenue Bridge. I think that's wonderful. In the right-hand side, that's the Jefferson Avenue parking lot as it looked half-full recently. That's parked. That is actually parked. I mean, we're using it as parking lot, but it's part of Columbus Park. So, you know, let's make it park. And the last picture, paved parking. It's like, this was taken again on, during the flood. And so the whole park is flooded. People were flooded in Washingtonville. Um, you know, the apartment buildings are getting it in their, in their, in their garage probably, right? They're on, on Van Rans, I'm gonna guess, right?
Yep.
And, and here's the parking lot. Oh yay, you know, it's sitting high and dry, this giant parking lot with a couple of cars in it. It's like, that's a waste. That's just dumb. That needs to go. That needs to be parked. I mean, you know. It could, in theory, as my calculations are correct. Hold two point six million gallons of water. And that water's then gonna go into the, percolate slowly back down into the groundwater. And eventually end up in the river, but it's not gonna flood. It's gonna be held there, it's gonna be stored there, and then it's gonna recharge. Um, recharge the river as it should, because it's flood plain. That's what it is. And that's, and the Army Corps recognizes that. Um, okay. Moving along, um, on the other side of the Jefferson Avenue Bridge looking north. Um. Now, this gets a little trickier, but we wanna have a Greenway that has the whole thing. On either side of the river, there is village land. So if you look at the first picture. If you're looking up the Mamaroneck River on the right-hand side, there's a house there, but there's a chunk of village land. It is completely covered with vines. So uh, my argument is that if there was a pathway there for people to walk on or a walkway. It would have easier access for maintenance, and it would be maintained, because there'd be people on it. And now it's just a wasteland. That every piece of garbage that rolls down gets stuck in there. And it stops the water. So that's the right-hand side. So if you look at fourteen on the right where it's pale green, central map. Number fourteen, pale green on the right-hand side of the Mamaroneck uh, river. Um. That is all village-owned land. It was kinda surprised me. Um, and it connects all the way up to Willow Street. So you could have a little walkway like the one I designed in my first picture. That took you from Jefferson down along the river up to Willow, and you could, you know, you'd walk around Willow Street. Um, so what's happening on Willow right now is um. In the picture two, in this Mamaroneck River walk to Willow on the right-hand side, the upper right corner. This is village-owned land um, next to the river. And it's basically, there's just a lot of people parking there. I mean, why not? I'd park there too. Um, but there's plenty of parking on Willow Street. I don't know why they park there, but they do. And they don't really need to. So. That's village-owned land. That can be parked. Um, behind that parking lot, where you see it's just a mountain. Of knotweed covered with vines, basically what the Rockland Pocket looked like when we started. Um, that is village-owned land up against the river. That is not helping anybody, like David said. It's not absorbing properly. Um, if you put native plants in there that have much deeper root structures than these invasives. Um, and so on and so forth. You know, you could attract birds and all that. It would be lovely for people. But it could also be designed in such a way that it took some of the, of the floodwater. And the last picture is a little further in. This is village land. Now, the, whoever lives there has, you know, mowed it and, you know. But that's fine. And you can see the Jefferson Bridge right there. There it is. So that's, so I would, I'm proposing that the walkway goes through on that side. Um, now, next side, next um, next page. If you look at fourteen, thirteen and fourteen, actually, thirteen and fourteen on the central map. Uh, on, which is the, basically the northwest side of the Mamaroneck River. Um. There's a little bit of village land. It's pretty tight. I don't know if you could, you know, use it, but it's along where Picone Sausage is. They're parking and there's a little bit of land, whether you could get through there. Um, but it, what interests me, and we haven't approached them. At all or anything, but I would like to, that would be something that we would have a further conversation about with the board and with the new mayor when you come on. Um. That is the, the um, it says in the, in the papers that it's owned by Ameranda Hess. Whoever owns it, it's a gas station. And as you know, the whole back of that gas station, it's very, very densely vegetated. It's fenced off. There's a lot of trees there, and it goes down to the river. And that could be, um, that would be a gorgeous bird sanctuary. It's, it's taking water now. It's holding water now. It could hold more. If we, uh, if we were able to, you know, go in there and design, with a proper landscape architect and design it properly. But I don't know if, if it's developable at some stage. But. You know, it's a gorgeous little piece of property that I really think. Uh, you know, is doing good work now and we, you know. My vote is to find a way to um, do a conservation easement with those people and, and turn that into a, you know, Hess uh, bird sanctuary. Fourteen continuing up, that's behind the North Shore Farms. Um, they, that again, so there's private land on that side. Number fourteen and number fifteen. There's a big parking lot there that's owned by a corporation that also owns some of the waterfront. Um. And you know, my view, uh, what do I say about that? I say something here about it. Um. Uh, anyway, I, I, I feel strongly that it's very worthwhile to um. To try to find a way to um, make floodable park space out of that. Um, okay, so this is taking a long time. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Well, I think you're missing a man. Oh, no. What am I missing here? Oh, well. Um, I don't know what happened.
It's on the other side.
No, it's not here. Um, so, okay. The Nostrum Pocket Park, there's pictures. There's actually a site map that I was, should've been in here, but we, we lost it. Oh, I don't have it. I don't know what happened to it, but that's all right. So there it is. It should be turned the other way. It's, you know, it has to get turned to the right. It's kinda upside down. But you know, there's not a whole kind of information here, but just so you know. Um. Actually, it was Dan that said, hey, you know, we're finished with the Hillside Bridge. That's village land. I don't remember if he said that, Dan. Remember saying that, Dan? You said that to Christian and I, and we went, okay, we're gonna go check it out. And um, you know, with Jerry's permission, we done some planting there. Lou was part of that work crew. God bless you, Lou. And, and Liam, and Jen, and Lindsay, and Debbie, and all these people. Doing some really hard labor, um, digging out a lot of knotweed along the bank. And then Lindsay got us a grant from DEC with a bunch of stream-side plants that were designed for stabilization. Pussywillow, Virginia roses. Um, and a bunch of other stuff that we planted there. People donated stuff to us. Lindsay gave us a lot of ferns. Um, and then we got some village shrubs and up along the fence, which backs onto this corporate parking lot, which is very lightly used, by the way. Uh, we put a butterfly garden in. We've got shrubs. We've got goldenrod. We've got a lot of seeds. So that's gonna be a butterfly garden. So if you look at this picture, cause I spent a lot of time now, when I'm kinda finished with Rockland, now I live over here in this neighborhood. Um. So there's, so I was out down there one day, I think it was in um, probably in May. And, and these kids were like just fooling around in the water. They came running down. Through the, through the little forest, you like, you know, and their babysitter was after them and off they went. They were playing and having a great old time. And um, so you know, this, this is, this is life. This is wonderful. And so the second picture is after we did our work. I didn't, you can see in the first picture, there's vines and things in the picture. Second picture, you can see a little bit of the um. The ferns, you know, these plants that we plant are tiny. Uh, but I've, I've been back and there's, you know, some of them don't make it, but a bunch of them have. These are the DEC plants that cost like seventy-five cents for one, for one shrub. And then here's the Nostrum Pocket, how it looks in the fall. And then again, I've noted these two parking lot sites, sites that are adjacent. That um, they're unbuilt. And uh, before they get built. Um, I think, you know, it behooves us to see. If we can come to some kind of arrangement with um, the owners to do a conservation easement, you know, it's for part of it. Um. So I'm, um, okay, let's see here. What did I miss?
If you, if you could take us home, Kate, please.
I will, I will. So I'm almost, I'm almost there. So um. In the central map, wherever the central map is. Uh, I've, I've lost track of it. I've lost track of my central map. Um, in the central map, if you look down. To the right, you'll see spaces eighteen and nineteen. Eighteen is Ward Park. Which I gather we're gonna lose some of it, maybe when the Army Corps puts that bridge in, you know, whatever they're gonna do. But actually, the land continues on, village-owned land all the way down to Tompkins. It's completely overgrown. Uh, there's sort of a pathway there. I don't think anybody uses it, but. Uh, we would, we wanna re reclaim that land and, you know, get all the vines and, and, and rose bushes out of there. And create a pathway that would, that would need a staircase to get you up to Tompkins Bridge, because it's down there. But it would form, it makes a way for people to go through, to enjoy the beautiful scenery. Now, the great thing is, we went out with our committee and on the other side of the bridge, north of the bridge. It's village-owned land. It's, they're not, there's nothing going on there. It's just a site. I think they mow it a little. Uh, people go in there and use it. There's a fair bit of garbage and, you know, beer cans back there. But um, that's a fabulous piece of land. Now, there are some, some, some property owners um, that have land in there. And um, you know, so we'll have to see, but we, we do know one of them. Who knows his neighbors, who used to be on our committee, who asserted that they were interested in doing conservation easements. So there is a real good opportunity to turn that park area north of Ward into a proper park. And there's other little bits of pieces of village land that you could maybe put these together. You know, if you were willing to turn the Anita Avenue Bridge and put a pedestrian crossing um, on top of it, that would be a terrific amenity. Pull things together. There's a lot more that could be done there. But that uh, piece of land on the north side of Ward Avenue Bridge. Um, is a fabulous site that needs to be recuperated. Okay, winding this up. Um, on the north map, you will see the um. First Street Pocket Park. That, so that is an existing kind of a park. Um. It, it needs, it needs love. And uh, you know, and so we, we would give it some love. Um, very tight in there to, to continue the walkway. There's little bits and pieces of land. We would, we would try to find a way to do that. Um, but then as you go up to, on the, so the first street park is on the south side of the Berry Avenue Bridge. On the north side, you've got your ambulance company with village-owned land right there. And then you've got throughway land, county land, and village land on both sides of the river that takes you all the way up to the Harrison border. And then county land that continues into Harrison. So anyway. That's kind of a lot, isn't it? But, so what's happening is that. Long Island Sound Study. Um, they have money. They have a grant opportunity that we are in the process of applying for. Um. It's basically ten to twenty people for up to, or ten to twenty entities. Our, this project is exactly what they're looking to do. Um, I won't, you know, read you all their own goals, but it matches up very closely to their goals. They get money through EPA. Um, so we're gonna, gonna look for that. And the idea is to um. With your permission. To take that, let's say we get a hundred thousand dollars, to hire a landscape architecture company. That, that does this, that does climate resilient green um, infrastructure. To, to take my little plans and to, to, to do it properly, so that we have executable plans. That we can then get further money for to say, okay. Let's hire you now with this other pot of money to build this, to make this happen. Um. So that's, that's kind of where we're going. So that's, that's, that's the ask. And that's why we're, we put you under some time pressure, because the deadline for this first piece is um, December fifteenth. So we're working towards that already. And um. And like David said, there are, you know. Like other pools of money, but step one is to take it to the next step to say, the, the, the village supports this idea. Um, for all the reasons that we put out there, including the new people coming in. And that we're gonna take it forward, we're gonna design it. And then we're gonna find, we're gonna execute it. And we're gonna make it happen. Just like we made the Rockland Pocket happen. All right?
Mayor, if I can, if Kate's finished?
Yes, I am.
So the, the Long Island Sound Resiliency Planning Support Program. Um, they have, like Kate said, they have a million dollars. They'll do ten to twenty awards. There's no match required. And by December fifteenth, we need to provide a letter of interest. Obviously, with what the work that Kate and the um, CFTE have done, we have more than a letter of interest. So we're going to. Uh, what we want to package up what Kate has plus a letter of interest. Either signed by you or signed by me. It doesn't really matter, because there's no match required. To be able to um. Um, apply for a planning grant. That would allow Cornell and UConn to give us a, a service provider, quote unquote contractor, to be able to move this project to the next phase. So that's really what the ask is.
Yeah, and just so you know, I did meet with um, Taryn this morning, who's your grant. And so we kinda went over it, just to get a little bit ahead of it. Assuming you're gonna say yes, of course. But um, you know, what's gonna be needed or the, the pieces that we, that she and I need to pull together, and that's an important one.
Is, is everybody on the board uh, okay with the concept of uh, asking? Is it great, brother?
There's, there's nothing, not, not the like.
Just one other item here. There's an item on tonight's regular meeting agenda. Uh, one of the outcomes of a carbon answer plan or hazard mitigation plan. Was that open act, open space acquisition, acquisition study for the Sheldrake River. And one of the items.
With this.
Yeah, one of the items is to uh, move ahead with that type of study, because we gotta get grant for that.
Just moving ahead, we don't need a resolution for this. We could just give our, our consensus here.
Yeah, because there's no, there's no money out of our pocket.
Okay. So I think you have a, you, you, you have a, the blessing.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and for purposes of the letter of interest, I don't need a vote from the board. Like, that's my question.
I, we can ask that question.
I look for, I looked for the resolution requirement, and it may be for the next phase, but for this phase, which they call Track One. It doesn't look like they're asking for a resolution at this point. They just want a letter of interest. And of course, we're gonna wow them with all the stuff that Kate has already. So I think we'll be in great shape.
Well, and, and if worse comes to worse, we have a meeting in two weeks. If there has to be a letter, there's a meeting.
And you know, and I'm gonna be speaking to Taryn in like a week.
Okay, we gotta.
Find out if she moves out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Go get a drink of water.
Uh. Okay, you know what, there's, there was staff on tonight, because they have issues that uh, are on the agenda. And then we have a presentation by Mr. DeAngelis about. A new village hall. So I'm gonna get the staff next. Uh. And Gino has the dam. All right, we're gonna do Jeff on. Uh, Jeff, you here for the ride-on mower?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, would you like to elaborate on it?
Uh, two weeks ago at the work session, I brought to the board uh, an electric ride-on mower with a trailer. Uh, I was requested to bring a gas-powered ride-on mower to this meeting. So we could discuss the differences between both and the price differences.
Okay, okay, and, and the, the, the. Price differences stark?
Uh, it's about, uh, the electric ride-on mower with the trailers comes in at uh, around forty-six thousand dollars. And the gas-powered ride-on mower that we. Currently use now, it comes in at um, thirty-three, five, seven, eight, sixteen. So it's about a thirteen thousand dollar difference.
We're replacing a mower, Mayor, that we've already dumped into about. We're replacing a mower, Mayor, that we've already dumped into about. I think, what was it, Jeff, fifteen thousand?
Uh just looking at this year's budget, we dumped about fifteen thousand dollars into. Our current ride on mower to keep it going. I did a little research today. The last time the Parks Department purchased. The same type of mower was back in two thousand three.
So it's twenty years old and we poured in half of what a new mower would cost um similar replacement.
Yes, so the question really is for the board, would would you wanna go with the electric mower or do you wanna go with the uh gasoline mower?
Correct.
The um the the price difference didn't uh i- isn't that stark. And I'm wondering if we're being penny wise and pound foolish, um uh that's that's all.
Just, just, just my opinion is. We, we've had the same mower for twenty years, we we know, we know what it does, we know how long it lasts. The electric world is kind of new to commercial and governmental use. Especially on. Areas as big as we have. It's either we take a shot at it and see how it goes, or we go with what we know works.
Uh that's true, if you buy it, if you buy it, it's a flop.
Alright, I would, I would defer to uh your ju- your judgment on this.
My my judgment would be that um. You know, we we cut a hundred and forty four acres a week. We know what our current. Diesel mowers could handle. I do not know what. An electric mower could handle.
Okay, that 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 says it all.
Alright, so.
There's a, there's a few other municipalities around us to use electric mowers, but. They have the luxury of having garages in those parks. We have one central garage. And all of our parks are based around the outside of that garage.
So the 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 gas mower, you you drive to the parks, am I correct?
The gas mowers, we drive directly to the parks, we don't trailer them, we don't use an uh pickup truck to bring them. We we get on them, we put the safety bars on, we put our seatbelts on and and we drive them to each park.
You can't do that with an electric, you have to trailer it.
If we do that with the electric, first of all, it only does thirteen miles an hour. Second, second of all, if we drive it park to park when we had the um gravely rep come down to us. If we drive it. To the parks every day, we lose two hours worth of cutting time. Per per day. So we already, we already have to buy a second set of batteries, because we only get six hours of cutting to begin with. And then if we drive them. We're cutting that down to four hours, so we would have to switch. Batteries out at lunchtime and then bring them back.
And 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 the drive to the park, we use a PAFY back.
It it cuts two hours, each day it would be cut down two hours with the amount of driving we do.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, uh I I guess it's it's more practical. To to go with the gasoline, what 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 does the rest of you think?
Well, I I mean, it's it's not, we don't have to do this immediately, do we?
No, he need, no, he needs the mower.
Time, Jeff, do you remember?
Say that again, Jerry?
What's the lead time on the mower?
So when I just got the updated quote uh two weeks ago. Uh someone just placed an order that day and it's due in in April.
Yeah, so.
So they ordered it, uh I think that was uh November fifteenth, and it's not due in until April two thousand twenty four.
Um my my only concern is that the two weeks ago, we had a lot of folks here who were concerned about just the money. And 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 we didn't hear from folks who who might be more passionate about. The environmental part of it, so so I I uh I I feel like we got one side of the uh. One side of the the public input, we haven't, we haven't heard it, and so we might wanna get a little bit more public input on it.
We also.
I know, I know, but you you weren't here two weeks ago, it was like, you would have thought it was a a toxic waste dump.
Also indicated two weeks ago at the regular meeting that we would be discussing both options at our regular meeting, I mean. Uh no, we said at the regular meeting, we do it at the regular meeting, so I think.
This is something that gets.
Because we, because last two weeks ago, we had. Quite a long conversation. Many, many people spoke about the cost of the mower. We asked Jeff to come back with another quote, and we said that we were gonna discuss it at the regular meeting. Could have the opportunity to weigh in.
I mean, it's just not gonna hurt.
They already have that eligibility to possibility.
But Mayor, it's not, in 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 board, it's not our only mower, there will be an opportunity in the future to discuss more in depth, the electric.
Let me finish, please. Wha- wha- what I'm saying is. The board should come to a consensus on what we think is best for the community. Present that tonight. And if if people feel contrary, they can get up and have their three minutes of say. Uh but but. You know, we we have, we have our uh head of D P W telling you that this would be the best move. And I don't know, it just. Not everything is a debate that's, you know.
I think that a lot of people were, didn't, didn't understand how, you know, didn't, the the cost seemed very, very expensive. I think a thirty three thousand dollar lawn mower seems pretty expensive too, so I think that people were reacting to the cost. And then there was a conversation about whether it was more, it was, uh you know, it's environmentally sound. To use electric, it may not be practical with our parks, there was a lot of thoughtful conversation. I s- I imagine some people will be back tonight because they thought from the last meeting, they'd be able to weigh in, and they will.
And they can wait, but it 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 shouldn't be an open issue amongst us.
You're not knowing what direction the board was going to. Go during work session. We have two resolutions on tonight's meeting.
Jeff, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Village employee. Uh with Jason Pinto, you get the rec fees and gas powered utility vehicles.
Hello, goo- good evening, Mayor and Board, um so we'll just do the fee schedule first. Um uh so we uh met with the uh village manager a few months back. Uh to come up with a uh planning for our budget, our revenues and the fee schedule. Um we've uh generally, it's a five percent increase for residents, ten percent increase for non-residents in the fee schedule. Uh the fee schedule went to the Parks and Recreation Commission at our November meeting. And they voted unanimously to send it to the Board of Trustees. Uh so that fee schedule is in front of you now uh for consideration uh uh at a regular meeting. Um if anyone has any questions about an item. Feel free to ask, um but generally, it's a five percent incre- increase for residents and ten percent for non-residents.
Any questions to Jason about the fee schedule?
Oh, I did, and I'm trying to find it, I'm. No, I'm messing with a tablet, and that's what happens when we go out of. Uh Jason, Jason, how often do we um, how often do people uh? The utilize the um. The the pavilion space.
Inside or outside?
The outside, even though the people rent inside, but the outside.
The, well, the the deck. The ejac- adjacent to the building is booked every weekend, generally Friday, Saturdays and Sundays, usually multiple. Weekdays, like two on Saturday, two on Sunday. Um and that deck holds about fifty people, and during the hundred and two day season, it's. Regularly booked as well as the camp Monday through Friday uses it for seven hours um as well. Um inside, uh we're a little bit less limited, because we have keeps on one side, and then the other side is programmed for rec programs, Zumba. You know, um fitness programs, Southeast Consortium, special needs programs, so that uh. That side of the building is kind of booked, but we do do. Some people wanna do birthday parties in there in the winter, and we will, we do book it uh for them, but. Less so than what we do on the, in the summertime on the outside.
And do we um, do we pay or do we um, okay, but. Do we charge for the deck um on the beach too?
Uh you mean the little one, like where the tree is? Yeah, so so it's kind of hard to do two parties there at once, because you're so close to the other group and. But what we do is, we create a party package where they have the deck, they can use that little adjacent area for extra space, and then they can also use the. The beach facilities, the spray ground, the beach swimming and all, and the sand. So it's kind of like, both those decks are kind of like one when we rent them out, because you can't do two parties at the same time. Uh it's just, they're just on top of each other.
Alright, thank you, Nelson.
You're welcome.
And uh talk about your gas powered utility vehicle.
Well, I I have a couple of questions. Um page one, uh at the bottom, the uh there's, there's Harbor Island Park, Lanza Field Bandstand, resident and non-resident. So the current is seventy dollars an hour. Um and the new is gonna be twelve hundred dollars, so I assume that nobody rents it for one hour, there's.
Yeah, so that is based off, if the board approved a new bandstand, um I think the last meeting. That's a fee based off what we would charge for the new one, the old one. Is also in there, because we wanna have both, cuz I can't charge a fee that's not approved, so if we, if that other bandstand's not built by this summer. I still have to use the old bandstand, I need a fee for that, so that's why, yeah. The other bandstand is a hundred person bandstand, so that's why that fee is so much higher, because you could fit a hundred people under there.
And you won't be charging, but well, the but it's gonna be a different structure, okay?
Yeah, different structure, but I need to have both in there, because I I don't know. If I'm gonna have the new one by the time the rental season starts or not have it, so so I need to have options.
So. Okay, it just, that 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 isn't clear, so it's a non-resident is seventy dollars an hour. And for resident, it's currently twelve hundred, but it will be fifteen hundred?
Well, I have Lanza, Lanza Field Bandstand current, and then Lanza Field Bandstand new, there's two. Two line items there.
But there's.
Yeah, so one is the old bandstand at seventy dollars per hour, and then if we end up building the new one for the non-resident, it would be fifteen hundred.
Okay.
So based off the little bandstand that we currently have, which fits, I don't know, we mostly rent it for like school shows, like plays and things like that. Um which we would charge like a, like artistry, for example, rents it, they get, they pay forty five dollars an hour now for that little. Band shell. Um but if that's, right, but if that's not, but if we're gonna build a hundred person bandstand there, um I need a fee for that, and that was. These fees were done through research and what other people charged for a hundred person rental area.
Jason, I I think what Nora's saying is that, because there's no, there's two, there's two Harbor Island Park, Lanza Field Bandstand Resident New. One's twelve hundred. And then the same thing for fifteen hundred, I think it's probably non-resident for fifteen hundred. And I think it's for a four hour period, that I, that's what I think is not clear.
Oh, correct, so it would be, the resident would be twelve hundred, four hour minimum. And then the non-resident would be fifteen hundred for for four hour minimum, I I'm confused if that wasn't clear on the sheet. But yes, that's accurate.
On the sheet. Sorry, I assumed, but good question.
Yeah, so we do our, we do our outdoor facility, you know, decks or or in this case, bandstand, we do them for four hour minimums.
And so the extra hour is always after four hundred, is after four hours. Alright, and then one last one, Harbor Island, it's the next page. Pavilion Deck Rental Off Season, so I, is the season, the beach season, like Memorial Day?
Yeah, Memorial Day, Friday before Memorial Day to Labor Day. We were, I, we as a staff were having a difficult time renting it in September and October for that price. So we, a couple of years back, we reduced it, and we've had a lot more success getting it in like sixty degree days, so.
Alright, thank you, okay, that was all, thanks.
Anybody else have questions for Mr. Pinto on the piece? Nope, no, alright, uh. Please talk about the other item. The mo- the ride on the.
So last meeting, we had the electric version on, uh Dan asked that we put the gas on, so we can compare. Um so just to be simply and quick. The price difference, the electric one was twenty five, seven, ten, eighty, the gas version is twenty thousand nine, fifty, six, eighty, seven. So it's about a five thousand dollar difference between a gas version of the machine versus the electric version of the same machine. The gas version. Is uh, I know trustee Yizer Reed asked me a question about multipurpose uses, the gas version. Would be able to be used in snow. Versus the electric version, not as good to be used in snow, i.e. put a salter on it or whatever, whatever we need to do at that time. So uh we brought it back with the gas price, um which would be a little bit more um multipurpose or multi-use. So that's for the board to consider, both options are are in front of you.
And obviously, we go around the village with our gas powered U T Vs. To do all the sidewalks, the twenty four hour sites. And all of the locations that we have, uh that the Parks Department takes care of, that the D P W does not have to take care of.
More question.
So I'm I'm hearing that that you prefer the gas?
Because it's dual purpose.
The gas is for the village, so. For the Recreation Department, I would prefer the electric, everything I do on the beach is electric, but for the village, for a multi-department use. The gas is better, for example, every parade we do, the fire department by borrows the golf cart or whoever, um this would be a. Better for them versus the electric, um. Same with Parks Department, salter versus no salter, so more departments will be able to use it versus. Mostly just the Recreation Department use on the electric version.
So with with the gas version, you can salt?
Yes, yeah, so I called the rep and um I, because that, I know trustee Yizer Reed asked, asked that specific question, the gas, you would be able to put a salter on it. Um because it it's, it's, it's got more power to get through the snow, and they don't recommend that on the electric. Model. Uh this, this particular product, uh eight to twelve months from date we provide a purchase order, you know, these things take a long time. Uh I know the Parks Department just received. A piece of equipment, I think it was eighteen months, they ordered during COVID or something, uh so yeah, i- i- it. Nothing comes quick.
And that's for both the gas and or and or.
Yeah, the electric's actually a little bit longer, electric's more towards the twelve months, where the gas is more towards the eight months.
And this is replacing something that's how old?
This is new. This is new, we would be adding a service vehicle. To the beach during the summer and then use that service vehicle to augment the. The snow detail for the Parks Department in the winter.
And where do we store it?
We have a garage that we're gonna put it in, we have multiple garages, so we'll we'll figure it out. But yeah, it's, listen, it's up to the board to consider, um like I said at the last meeting. We make do, would this be a lot easier for my staff, my tard time people, hundred percent. Um would this not destroy the golf cart that we're supposed to be using for transportation, hundred percent, um but. You know, we'll make whatever we have to do work, so.
Thank you, what do you folks think?
I I, well, I I think. I defer to his uh wishes, we'll get it.
Everybody follow that?
Yep.
Thank you, Jason Pinto.
Uh thank you, uh Mr. Mayor, um I just, real quick, if you don't mind, thank you for being such a good friend to the Recreation Department and your service to our community. I personally really appreciate uh your leadership towards my department, so thank you.
Thanks, Jason, it's a pleasure working with you and your department. God bless you, I'll see you around. Uh the next up is uh Jeff LaRusa. Jeff, uh you wanna talk about harbor fees?
Good evening, yes, uh you have in front of you the harbor fees. For two thousand twenty four season. I suggest about a two percent increase. For docs and uh also, the mornings have not been raised since two thousand and twenty. So if you raise those a dollar a foot, it's about a seven percent increase, you know, rounded. All these I had around a little bit to make them even, so it's easier for us when we're processing the applications, we're not dealing with change and that kind of stuff. So.
And it was about, it was about four years ago that we had a a significant adjustment. To our fees, three, four years ago, right, Jeff?
Yeah, it was about four years ago, yeah.
So the two percent is pretty consistent with, you know, C I P and all of that.
Right. Organized the fee schedule last year to make it more understandable for. For the staff and the public.
Wa- was there, was there a leakage from the uh increasing fees last year, or do we have a? A a full uh.
No, we're, we're, we're about the same uh occupancy wise, my my biggest thing that holds us back from filling up. No, we're 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 about the same uh occupancy wise. My biggest thing that holds us back from filling up more is not being able to put bigger than twenty two foot boats on the on the main docks, only on S dock. So once the dock build is over this winter, most of the docks will all be re- you know, finished. I can then concentrate on putting fingers. And then I'll come to the board at that point to uh increase the size of the boats on the docks. And then I think that will get us, you know, a a lot more occupancy when I could put like a twenty four foot boat on the dock, say, or something like that. Nobody buys small boats anymore. Everything is bigger. Yeah, we get calls all the time for, you know, twenty five, twenty six foot boat, but I I can't put those on the dock. The docks aren't set up for that. And it's in our code that they can only be up to twenty two feet.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that answer. Everybody have questions for our friend, Mr. LaRusa?
Yeah.
What is fine with what is proposing? Jeff, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night.
Alright, uh the next up I'm sure is going to be a rather lengthy uh it's it's uh Mr. DeAngelo, so a friend uh has a proposal for a new village hall. Uh then we're gonna do, if we have time, we'll do Gino uh with the Westchester Water Works Dam. Cause I know that's gonna be time consuming. And then we have stuff that we have to get done for the regular meeting. So just set yourself up and begin. I just have to make a quick break. Do you have any water running?
I don't have it.
What?
Yeah, let me give him a grab, yeah.
Grabbing one, please.
Yeah.
It's here, sir.
Um I'm Greg DeAngelo, and so I'm the deck with me is Brian Burke, teenager on the deck for my family. Um I'm not sure how many I I don't know if you all, I don't think all of you were, you know, I don't recall if all of you were here in December, last December, home presented. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, okay, so what I want to do is quickly go through, but I'll go through it quicker now that I have to read too much of it. But just a kind of an agenda. Um initially starting, you just want to do a brief history of where we were. Um you know, what what were primary goals for the space planning study and and the new building hall? Um have three big pieces to it. One is improve the police and court facilities. Um their their undersides or space layout of security and safety um concerns about them. So this is a big objective for this project. Uh providing some flexible space for emergency shelter, emergency use, also for community use too, in different types of meetings and and things events might happen. Uh and it also provides opportunity to consolidate the village offices, bring it back from the data, back to this site, have all one place. It's more efficient for ability registration, communicate back and forth in first meetings. Uh they still have some of those, right? Um and um uh and and also more convenient for the public, have one place to go. So and then this becomes the village civic center, this whole concept that's been discussed between the fire department, Edmond Theater, American Legion. Um so I'll go through that planning study briefly, just to kind of give remind you of of your overall layout. And then what the board asked us to do afterward was go into a schematic design, which is a a more detailed level of analysis. Uh testing the floor plan layouts for the different departments as well as adding engineers to the team. So we we brought on a site engineer. Lancy, an architect and planning uh parking, traffic consultant. Uh we brought on a structural engineer, and we brought on a mechanical electrical running and fire protection engineer to flesh out the requirements. So that the cost estimator can update the cost estimate, see where we're at. Um so we've had additional program meetings with courts and police as well as the village administration. Uh we've been through the existing building site with the team, the engineering team, got them oriented to the project and and had several discussions with them. Looking at alternatives, ways of doing some different things. So we've now called that into a schematic design set. What I'm gonna present tonight, what we're gonna present tonight is really just parts of that. There's there's um several drawings and and many pages of of some narratives and outline specifications as well as stock up for a cost estimate. Um so with that, Dan, that we don't have to really get into that stuff at this point. So if you all remember, this was the initial um planning study. I'll see if my uh laser works here without getting anyone in trouble here. Um you know, this is the original building that we have and and the basic concept was to add on the police facility, expand it on to the left side, our left of the building. Uh and then the corporal is courts and and the tan color is really the offices, administrate village office administration up on the second level. Uh and then on the third level would be building and planning. Uh and then the the reddish color is really space that's somewhat flexible, resiliency, emergency use, shelter space. Um and we have a few views of that, Dan, if you wanted to kind of sort through. And then the other key piece of this was by pulling it out, taking away the parking lot that police need now in front of the building. We have the opportunity to create this kind of central village green. Uh and then to the left of it, towards the library is the poetry garden, can remain and be enhanced as as be necessary. And then we have the war memorials and kind of the memorial park across American Legion. So there's we thought there was a really nice sequence of of spaces and just open green space in front of the building. Um go ahead, Dan. And then, you know, working around the building, Johnson Avenue stays as it is. You know, a little bit of recreating primarily provides the opportunity to get parking underneath the building. Uh in the planning study, we had one level of parking for under the village offices and a level of parking under for the police departments. Um and you can still see some of the old building, existing building standing up there. And with the approach was, you know, that is part of the history of America, this this building. And then there is some sustainability and value in its additional, its existing infrastructure. Uh there'll be a lot of improvements. We put a new elevator in there. That's a, you know, a centerpiece. It also allows some phasing, you know, different ways of phasing the product. Next stand. Thank you. Uh and then just another view from the library lane side. Uh where the police kind of their their whole wing here and how the the other uh sort of volume step down. So you can see some of the building from from the backside as well. Uh and this becomes more of a service corridor, Johnson Street. Alright, so let's. Uh then quickly, just to show you floor plans, this is the overall site plan, Prospect Avenue, bottom of the page. Library Lane on on the left side, uh Johnson Street beyond uh where a pub on the page and then and now Pleasant. Um the the wing with the courts and the um and the village offices on the right hand side and and then the police station and facilities on on the left. Um so that's going to kind of, we we did a few. Floor plans, again, lower level garages, if you know, basement stuff, facilities, storage stuff next. Um uh and in the first level, this is where we started stretching out and and allocating space for the police department on the first floor. We have putting a covered arcade in front of the existing building, which is roughly here. Um where the red is. And then and 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 a separate entrance on the right where would be the main public entrance for the courts, for village offices, for building and planning, uh kind of an open area for, you know, it's kind of a lobby. Uh courtroom, we reorient it to that now. Uh and but basically our first level is all court facilities and upstairs is 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 running the next one down. Thank you. Uh village offices, which is up here around uh caller space for the courtroom. Uh the new elevator that comes in, we're adding two elevators to the building. One really dedicated the police department use um on on in the blue. And then the other is inside the building. We've located this in a spot where we can get the overlap of the elevator to stay with underneath the roof lines of the existing building. Um so that that and it and it works out fairly well. We have kind of public logic on each.
Overhead.
On each on each floor, right? Go ahead.
Hey, Greg.
Yeah.
Greg, can you go back to SK, SK four? I want to make sure that the secure hallway is included.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And what we started, you know, looking at for this um uh uh one of the critical components within municipal buildings and facilities and courts and 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 police is the separation of different uh circulation paths. So what we integrated in here is is a back hallway, uh which is primarily allows for the police to bring up, you know, detainees. And they bring up from the parking garage where there's now a Sally Court, can be a Sally Court, uh an elevator brings them up into a sep- separate area where they are. And also escort them to the courts, to the courtroom without crossing through public or other municipal offices, right? Now they kind of stick through the police. You know, police department here now. Um so that's very important. And also, as we went ahead, had to take additional conversations with with the court staff, the court administration. They also realize that they they need to wheel down some of their court records down to court facilities or sometimes the judges don't want to really have to cross paths with with public. So this gives them an option to park in the police side of the building, use that elevator and have a back way into the courts. Uh we can talk about that further as that. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? So while you're on that page, there's the courtroom.
Yes.
How like, how big is that in comparison with this room?
It's essentially the same size. Uh and we'll get into more detail, but I'm really I'm trying to go somewhat fast to get through the the basic concept of like I said, if we've not worked out it, you know, that's with dangerous, right? It's not, I think this one more like um. And. To the top floor. And that's a building plan. That's all within the footprint of the existing building. We have to put a new second stair on 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 this back corner. Uh a new stair here, similar to where the one is now, where the second stair, for the building. Um and then I think now we're moving on to what was the schematic design, so it's the cover, like I said, it's a very thick quarter. We're not going to get into the paper. The next one is a rendering, a more realistic rendering of the building as the design has been developed. Um so you see the big village green in the center of Prospect Avenue sidewalk here in front and. Uh walkways, separate walkways for police.
Yeah.
And to the and to the uh court, going to the creation opening. But link by the um by the arcade, it does a few things. It's certainly the place to um uh you know, provide skewing covered access and, you know, can use also setting up for different types of events, right? So left would be a poetry garden, to the right would be the um the memorial uh wing. Um and also, you know, just reminding me coming here tonight is these these now have been graded so that they're, it's one long walkway. It doesn't, you don't need steps or separate ramps. So which is a very nice, just easy, you know, there's a retaining wall on the sides, but you know, that that separates and divides the space, separate space for the poetry garden. And just quickly, in terms of the design, you know, we we from early on, we kind of want to re kind of relate to the existing building, even though we're not replicating it. And and we do that in a way by kind of respecting the height of the second floor corners that you see in the building. And then also, another thing we worked with is the the spacing of these bays. Uh on on the existing building, we've got, which are a little shallow here, but there are the big arch windows and tunnel windows above. And we've kind of repeat that pattern as we go across the building. So there there's some acknowledgement of the building and kind of working with it. And this this pattern works well with the with the spaces above. So we keep going. Uh this is kind of going around, getting a couple of different views. Kind of review, bird's eye view of of courtroom, village administration side, the the curved arcade, little curve in truly to help make something more of this space. There's a lot of landscape is playing to show that and then we keep keep going. This is the backside now. So this is pretty much the same. This flat downward with more in terms of brick. Nothing is definitive in terms of the color of the brick. It's still early phases, but some kind of brick that is maybe not identical to existing building, but complementary. And and that would be a discussion during the next phase of the design. Uh this is kind of more service happening back here where there's, you know, trash refuse pickup, loading and unloading. Um and and it the ways out for for people that can afford, at least we're probably still parked primarily around along Johnson, but some local staff could do there. I forgot, we're also expanding the park amount pleasant, the parking lot on Mount Pleasant, off Mount Pleasant. Could be gated, so that's more private just for staff uh between that parking lot and garage. With our parking study, it should be adequate for the court and um village staff and building department plan. We've also, after having several discussions with police department, are showing a new, and I'll show this plan more, because you see a little pink there. A new two level parking uh deck, similar to the Hunter Pier, similar configuration uh downward library lane lot is now. Uh let's keep keep going. Uh I guess this is uh, you know, calling again here. Parking decked, we are putting solar panels and there's a lot of like solar panels. And so the parking deck, it's all on a new line to the green space. Uh what we did also do is after further discussion with the police, they really need more parking and and they have a, you know, kind of a crunch period between the end of the daytime shift and the beginning of the evening, afternoon and evening shift, where we've got two sets of personal vehicles and all squad cars. Basically at the same at the same time. So they they this gives them an extra little more, some more flexibility, uh this extra level of ride of space here. Uh okay, yeah. Um this, so this is one of the drawings from the site, similar in here, yes, probably. Um in this case, Prospect is up on the top tier, the Hunter Pier deck, it's across the street at the top. Uh Mount Pleasant, this is Johnson Street and Library Lane on the right. Um you can see the three D kind of zones of 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 green space. Start and suggest a general plan for for landscaping around uh the expansion of lot off Mount Pleasant. This would be the lot off of Library Lane. At the ground level, you could could come off of Library Lane, right, on grade into the lot. And then using the grade of Johnson Street, the grades enough, get to the upper level without any, so we don't lose space on the straw on the parking deck for for ramps. It's it's all incorporated there.
Hey, Greg.
Yes.
That that library lane, what we call the Johnson Lot, it looks like you're adding like fourteen or sixteen spots?
Uh we're adding twenty nine on the bottom. It's thirty three, nine, twenty three. So.
Okay.
Now it was about sixteen or so, I think.
Is that for public use as well?
Well, so the lower level could be for public use or permit use.
Yep.
Um and then the upper level probably needed for all for the police. But it would give some extra parking. You know, it's it's lower down grade, but for the the commercial or residential uh in here. Um also by this configuration, we're actually adding some green space between the parking area and the um and the side of the Washingtonville housing uh building. So. Uh and there's some screening along along the lot. Okay, um so now we, next is, yeah, it's it's some more detailed plans. Quickly, this is the lowest level of garage parking, showing where the side corner is showing the, you know, um parking garage and and some of the faces, but stairs are completely new. Next. Uh this is the second level of police station, rides, all the basement facility, active storage space. So we can get out of six fifty American Avenue storage spaces. Uh and then and then this is municipal uh or for, you know, village administration parking here. Um I won't get into any more of that, that's enough. And then so the first floor. Uh the first floor, you know, where the, you know, the two entrances are on the left hand side of the police station with a, you know, control command center lobby. Um as well as, you know, other facilities, banning locker rooms. Uh one of the building projects get to thirty percent by twenty thirty of women uh personnel. So that that expand the locker room, it's it's accommodates that. Um some of the places that people need to meet with police departments first. Uh muster room, uh you know, bin, whatever on this lower level and then an area for detainee, which is kind of sectioned off from elsewhere. With access to that, um uh what you call it, to to the uh the service part, right? Uh on the on the right hand side is basically all court administration. We have have had several meetings with them and they will be more moving forward. But basically, along the side of the building, we've re- reoriented the courtroom. So it's going, it's actually in the same direction we are now. But the entrance would be in the back of the room, which allows the same amount of space, more more seating in 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 the space. They've shown two different layouts, one which meets OCA regulations, Office of Court Administration regulations for uh courtroom use. And then up above, more typical for, you know, village board meetings, land use board meetings and 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 so.
Hey, Greg. Greg, you I you've met with us like two or three times in detail. How? Have you met with the judges and have you met, have they talked to you about um what they're looking for as far as the the new layout?
Yeah, we've met with them at least three times since the planning study.
Okay.
And yes, in detail, and they they actually have more common. And yes, in detail, and they, they actually have more comments. You know, based on what we did last, but but what we have done is, is we created. The the trick here is, is the talent was to have a window that's easily accessible from the public. Um, keeping them be able to lock off their, but also. Um, getting access to the back of the courtroom. Um, having this secure party that the judges could use accordingly with the police, so they, they can come go without having to worry about, you know, uh. Problematic interactions with the people. Um, and and then they can shut that down at night, so they, they have, when this courtroom is in use by other people. There's no access into the court area, but there's still access to the back where there's the jury room, break room. Executive section room, things where, you know, other boards want to use it, uh, a couple of files back there as well. Once, there's also a courtroom, the, excuse me, a topic room in the front corner. Which could be used sometimes prosecutor needs to meet with with the detainees. But also, um, it can be used in a brighter way, it's just with a reservation type system.
You know, the the prosecutor, the prosecutor, he or she um, meets in the, in the hallway now, it's just, it's just. Got off, so.
Which is one of the, right, one of the comments that it probably caused. And then it's this area within the existing building is where space that, you know, we have a warming kitchen, we have an area for showers and bathrooms. Uh, and then these could be configured into. Some kind of temporary shelter if needed, or also other times by members of the community for different types of committee meetings or whatever. Um, this is the two stories, it's back here, it's actual, actual seating area, so if there is an overflow in the courtroom or or a board meeting. Or a land use meeting, you know, they could be set up in a remote theater too, so more people could be present if they wanted to, um, and and. And and also exhibit space, I mean, there's some opportunities for artwork for the community and things like that, so.
Um. Is this two rooms, this community room, is this two separate rooms or is this one large room?
Is this the space here?
Yeah, the community, no, the community room space.
Well, it could be certified, we would do some temporary.
Temporary partitioning, yeah.
Okay.
Um, you know, it could be a couple, three or different spaces, or one or two, so, yeah.
So the courtroom, this room holds ninety-six, and this says there's forty-eight seats.
Forty-eight with the courtroom, now, so two things, uh, this is set up. Very rigidly with the, or very closely aligned with the law for support administration regulations. I know I've seen it, sometimes our court does it a little bit differently, and it doesn't need as much space. But we want to show that this.
I've also been here where literally there wasn't room to stand in this courtroom.
During, during court crap.
Yeah.
Well, that's part of the reason to have this extra space on the outside, not everybody, you know, there may have to be some management for that. Um. And if I didn't sit in a place for people to be standing inside or in, you know, not.
I mean, that's the difference between the number of seats he can fit. And then the number of people who can be in here based on the physical size of the room.
But, so the courtroom tables wouldn't be stationary, so if there was a big, because forty-eight isn't really enough. For a public hearing. Here, I mean, we may have meetings where there might be more than forty-eight people, village meetings.
Play that more like the way we are using it now.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And and this is about the same, because you get six seats across, we have one, two, three, four, five rows, so, um. So it's a cheaper layout like that, and that's about what we have here now. Now, that doesn't mean you're like a standing room or whatever applies, but but having a door in the back of the room allows for some more. Really some more room and maybe a road jam down the back. Um, we, we can, we can look at it, what the rating is in terms of square feet per person and exits, we, we have, we have plenty of exits, so.
Yeah, and the one thing about the seats is that, um, in a court, the seats for the audience have to be secured to the ground.
Yeah.
Because you could have an irate person pick up the seat and it's displeasure to the judge.
Supposed to be anywhere, I mean, that's. Or maybe not to the ground, but to each other, so that they.
Yeah, they're supposed to be.
Yeah, so that's, that's a simple way of handling, it's just the interlocking.
So, so one question is that that exhibit space, um, that's open to above, can that be overflow?
Well, yes, yes, that's, that's.
Can be, right? It's not gonna be fixed. It's not gonna be fixed with exhibit space or or walls or anything like that, it's just gonna be an opening.
So open, and you know, above, it's open to above, so it's sort of space and like, I mean. Even if it's one way of arranging chairs. Uh, for seating, maybe, you don't even need that many seats, maybe more, you know, get more exhibit space, walk around the walls.
Good. Okay.
Uh. So then it's really the second floor, you know, coming up from the public, coming in, there's kind of control lobby here. They can go into the court treasury side, or into the village manager, or H R. And a ring around here, this is a two, this is a two story space, it opens to the exhibit below, which also has windows, lots they like to come in. Um, there is a connection here, but there would be a controlled door into the police. Uh, facilities, but that does wouldn't make it to have to be any in-person meetings. Uh, between the chief and village manager, tenants, whatever, voting offices over here, uh, you know, allows that to be, to happen. Um, also, you know, people wanted, uh, some safe and training, classroom type space that had, you know, movable chairs and and movable partition also. Uh, and then one of the further meetings, they're talking about emergency command center, so. This, even though there's something in the fire department now, this is, this would be a a a logical place to create. The capability if there's something that the police needs also for emergency.
Yeah, I agree. Did, Greg, have you, the, the, the police department was, was, just received the accreditation, um, have you spoken to the chief? Um. They, when I was there at the exit interview, they made a comment about our facility, and I don't know if you had time to talk to the chief since. It was probably about a month and a half ago.
We, we have, we haven't seen it ready, but she basically related to the three critical pieces, one was. Uh, the lack of, of security passageway from the police detain areas to into the courtroom and back. Uh, it's one's Sally Court, right, and then the third was the impound area, some kind of.
A place where vehicles impound, any, anything that they, any property.
Right, so. So, you know.
You mean like a seized, like a seat, like a vehicle that was seized overnight and that has to be impounded for a period of time?
Yes, yeah.
The evidence, okay.
And and in the evidence, we have, I skimmed over, but there's evidence room in the basement, which is. Also a larger court storage room in the basement, um, so we're packing a lot in there. Um, yeah, this is basically, this is, you know, some more building and planning up here. Um, which is a law conference room, and also a secure area where, you know, walk the elevator up there. Uh, and then, and then a window, and and a secure, controllable access, uh, into that room.
Mm-hmm.
That's better. Uh, I, you know, areas for solar panels, you know, there's different types of mechanical equipment we'll need on these roofs, but. You know, we, we did have the cost estimator included on three, the green roof, and some of the.
Can you go to S, Dan, can you go back to S D three, if you're controlling the screen? So you see this expanded, yeah, now go, now, right there, you see this expanded parking, what we call the Johnson Lot, which is off of Library Lane? Can we? Greg, is it possible to add solar panels onto that parking lot? As well as, oh, I don't know if we want to add solar panels to the one on on Mount Pleasant, but this one here is kind of low. Um. Would we be able to add solar panels to that?
The answer is yes, Gary, and and you obviously said over parking, we're car parking under the paddle, it gives themselves shelter from the sudden and and. Uh, and we, we showed it in the renderings and 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 cost estimators also included some allowance, or at least a portion of this.
Okay, good.
Well, yeah. We, uh. Future project, you know, one of the key, yeah, oh, these are just a couple of drawings. Uh, we've got thirteen drawings from the structural engineer, uh, plant in detail, so they went ahead and made their friends, like, this parking section side. Right, they have some people a meal, it's underpicking of the existing building, it's basically reinforced with foundation, you've got, now blow it. Then it down into the ground further. Um, I think there's a page of detail, really just a couple, you know, this is a part of information that is now on the set. It's still not enough to build the building, but it, it estimated some general segment, it's hyperconnected. Uh, and similarly, so that was the plan that that they worked on that, and then O L A consulting engineers and mechanics like. Playing fire protection, came up with this diagram, and then there is, which is in the report. Kind of starting to zone off fifteen areas for the police, uh, the existing building, and the two additions are are new. Um, and different zone controls, which can all be discussed, you know, more detailed. And and at another second, but they, I, I made some reasonable allowance to think, again, plus estimator, but they're not together. Thank, yeah, just the second floor, and then that consultant who helped us with the initial estimate is the back, is. Uh, twenty-four pages before, this is just the first. I think you skimmed through it, Dennis, you know, there's a bunch of classifications in it, in terms of what what includes some of the. Area takeoffs and quarries, uh, I don't think we do well on that now. Um, you know, keep going down, and then, you know, the bottom line is this last page is coming up, yeah. You know, so they, they've done it by by site and area, it's a lot of the portion of it, it's also the mechanical, like, total site. Um, and it's some creativity similar to what we had before, uh, and we're right around fifty-one dollars, it's point eight, so.
So. So Greg, Greg and Brian, if I could, so we wanna, we wanna go after grant money for some of the, um. Well, to some, some of the court security issues that we're resolving, some of the police security issues that we're resolving. Um, and also, um, to have this as, as, um. Our evacuation center when the school is not. Uh, when the school is in session, and when the school's not in session, we do really well with the school, they're very generous, but when the school's in session. We, we, you know, unfortunately can't use it, and and sometimes we're, you know, we're, we're. We're forced to to come up with plans, and and we can't do that since the school is not in session for only three, a hundred days, or whatever, whatever it is. Um. Can we, can we use this estimate and this report to go after? Um, that kind of money, like, is this, is this pretty much set as far as the executive summary that you're providing?
Yeah, I think I would, I would want to talk to the grant person first, but it's a lot of detail in here, and it's, it's a very responsible estimate. Um, we want to package it differently, right?
Yeah, can you, can you potentially pull out that, the stuff that I just mentioned? Or or set, you know, set aside the stuff that I just mentioned? Obviously, you know, we're not gonna get grant money for new offices and and a new, you know, um, um. Building and and potential employee parking, we're not gonna get grant money for that, but the other stuff. There, there. There has to be money available for for, you know, for emergency response and emergency. Recovery, as well as the, uh, the O C A stuff that we're resolving.
So I'd say the simple answer is yes, getting to yes, we have to just kind of sort out what, you know, how we can pull apart and.
I don't see, I don't see, uh. In, in, in one of these lines, which one picks up the elevators?
Which one picks up the elevator, oh, uh.
You were gonna put them in for free.
This is, yes, this is. Yes, you would, you might know some things about.
Conveying system, okay.
Conveying.
Conveying system, so that's two elevators. Um. Two elevators, and one with entrance on two sides.
That's the police elevator.
Okay, so five thirty-five.
Four, that's four stop, right, four stop, and then the other one in the existing building, it's also four stop, right, you have one basin. Up to the. One of that, the basin, basin, one, two, three. Four stops also, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, that number three.
So how does the number feel?
It, it looks a little long, but okay.
I will be bidding on it, so.
Well, and, and, yeah, and then also sometimes the ways distributed between, you know, building share for. Yeah. All this construction doesn't, you know, different ways of put together.
Yep, okay.
That's not the worst way, that's, that is machinery.
I, is there, is this a project have the ability to be, uh, done in phases, for instance, um. The, the urgent thing we have is just the deplorable condition of our police department.
Right.
And and that, and and if nothing else happened, I, I, you know, I would be inclined to 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 do that, is that, is that something that? You can break it up, break it up?
Yeah, I think, yes, it can be, because the police department is clearly a new addition to get filled in. The phasing during construction, how to continue operate, we predict some, and there's some money allowance in the, in the budget for that. We want to look at that more closely.
And this assumes phasing.
It does seem to. Um, the other, they know that that is a concern for the building, it's, it's existing going, still not fully accessible, right? So, you know, that's a piece that at least get done at some point, putting in a new elevator and stair.
Yeah.
So.
So there's probably no cheap way to do it.
No, with the existing configuration of this building, it's not possible to build an elevator on the inside.
Well, we, we actually have the elevator for this building.
Yeah, but that, that, that's kind of based on a major renovation. But we couldn't, if we didn't do anything in this building itself, th- there's no. Space internally.
For an elevator on the outside.
Yeah.
Once, you know, doing this in a way to try to maintain integrity of this building and not have to. Cut through the roof, because the roof lamps have very light overhangs, and and that starts to get, you know. It's not that it can't be done constructively, it's just.
Well, you also have to get through shipper, because it's on, it's eligible to register, so. And so that's gotta be factored in, and I do think that getting rid of, I mean, I, I think you can make a good case for the. For the rear parking lot being two stories, but getting rid of the stone. You know, the stone sort of patio and stairs, and the big, I mean, the, the changes to the rear of the building are significant. And that's gonna have, you're just gonna have to make the case of why it can't be done any other way. But that will take, yeah, I, you have, yeah, and you'll have, you have to explain that to shipper and. Get a, you know, get a memo, but, yeah. But going through, going through the eaves for an elevator would probably be.
Yeah, it doesn't feel right, it just doesn't feel right, and doesn't feel necessary, I think there's.
That might be beyond the pale.
Yeah.
All right, uh, and I have questions for Mr. Anderson, Mr. Gada.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
What's the next step? Um, well, the next step would be to really move into the design development phase, um, you know, we have a couple of things that need to be done. Um, we have some proposals for ruins and test pits, so both for structural capacity with the, what the ground of earth is. And some drainage capacity, the stormwater. Um, and then get a, give a people engineer to evaluate those findings. And then, uh, talking to our realtor, if you know, earlier, it's, it's taking some problems in this building, because there's no good drawings of the building. We need to, we have to open up new walls and ceilings to get a better look, and structural, you know, it's something that we have to work.
Oof.
Uh, and then really, to, then we move on, you know, change building. And also, we had discussions about, and 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 we had some, uh, police security consultants. Just to kind of, you know, this was initial layout of plans, it's probably two, three that could be, should be done. Uh, and, you know, including the estimate for resistant glass around the first floor window. Uh, but but things like that accessing out of the elevator and stuff.
That's good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh.
Thank you.
The next step, uh, Gino, we're gonna have you up next to talk about the dam. And then we're gonna do the stuff that's on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Oh, you got, you got a mic, all right.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Board. So, um, the Mamanac River Dam has a hazard classification of class C. Uh, it has a dam. Which is based on the potential impact of the dam failure to downstream areas. Uh, the dam's current condition rating is unsound. We determined based on the conditions defined in New York's code, rules and regulations, part six seventy-three. Uh, dam safety regulations. The classification was selected based on divisions he's identified during the most recent inspection. Uh, conducted for preparation of the engineering assessment, E A P and I N M reports. Uh, first and foremost, the spillway is inadequate, and cannot pass the spillway design flood without over topping the dam. A few other deficiencies noted in the reports, the tracks observed on the upstream and downstream faces of the concrete section. Concrete walls of both apartments, spalling and deterioration of the concrete on the upstream face of the concrete section. Uh, missing flashboards at the crest of the, the concrete buttress section. And vegetation observed over the surface of the concrete buttress section and within ten feet on both abutments. Uh, since, uh, since the dam is, uh. As an inefficient or insufficient spillway capacity, the structure does not comply with the current New York State D E C dam safety regulations. Uh, a bunch of, a couple of options for us to consider. Uh, on the morning of October twenty-third, both Gary and I had a meeting with Doc Penestri, he is the section chief of the New York State D E C. Uh, dam safety, and John Smith, who's also an engineer at dam safety. Uh, the discussion focused on the two conceptual alternatives. Number one was the application for D E C variance, or as the D E C refers to it, as a deviation from their standard guidance. And the second was the dam replacement. Um, conceptual alternative one, uh, would likely consist of a moderate concrete repair. Conceptual alternative one, uh, would likely consist of a moderate concrete repairs and a grounding program. To increase the useful life of the impoundment and support the case for a structurally sound dam. Uh, that would meet current D E C, uh, loading conditions. Uh, dam would most likely be hardened to accommodate the overtopping of the dam during a spillway design flood event. And the earth and abutments would likely be replaced with grounded riprap to eliminate, eliminate erosion potential. Based on our discussions with the D E C, the variance alternative would, would involve an engineering analysis to determine the applicable design storm or design criteria. Submission of a permit application and submission of a bid package or specifications and drawing as to what. Actually would entail just this entire program that I described. Mister Kenastri advises to keep them involved at these various phases. They're, they're, they're inclined, they can be inclined to, uh, grant us the, the, the variance or deviation from their standard guidance. But they want to be apprised that every section they suggested meetings that maybe at, at twenty five percent, fifty percent, seventy five, ninety percent. Before we just present them with a full option, so we could present our case.
My question about, my question about going for a variance is if we just have, the, the current arrangement is we just have an agreement. To maintain the dam. Uh, we don't own the dam, do we apply for a variance if we don't own the van, the dam?
Uh, as far as I understand there, we, uh, we do not own the dam, uh, but we are, uh. Under an obligation to perform the maintenance.
Right.
And now this would be, with, this would be considered maintenance is, you know, question for, uh.
Yeah, they, they don't call it, they don't call it a variance, they call it a deviation, we kept referring it as a variance.
Next budget, bite of the mic.
It's on order.
Yeah, we're waiting.
And, and, you know, this is a unique situation, uh, ownership and management's responsibility to do that. My initial reaction is that the owner of the dam, the owner of the, the obligation to apply for the variance. But it would be our obligation to do the work, assuming to do the application and so forth, right? I assume they would be willing to make the application as the owner of the dam, even though we have the main office on the fish.
That's what I, that's what I figured.
And what about us expending funds on a dam we don't own, there has, oh, there has to be some sort of an agreement with the waterworks, sorry, now that you.
Yeah, well, we have an obligation, I get.
To maintain the entire dam or to maintain portions of it?
Yeah, so there would be no problem, there would be no problem to down and pay to satisfy an, give contractual obligation, we would ask.
So are they willing to, or can they, um, pay, like, you know, provide portions? Or is just really just all on us, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm having a hard time not saying that we can't or should not. But, or are they willing to, do we know if they're willing to, uh, provide any funds to help us? Whether, whatever route we choose, one, two, three or four, are they, could they?
Maybe Westchester.
Yes, Westchester joint.
Certainly, yes, I will see.
Let, let me not give an opinion here.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm.
So let, let me give a little history, the, the Westchester joint waterworks was going to remove the dam. At one point, and the village asked them not to, that was the genesis of the maintenance.
Um, is.
And what?
Do we, do we want to own it?
I, I don't think it's about owning it, my question is, we had the agreement for us to maintain the dam was sort of limited in scope. And I'm curious to see whether what we're embarking on is within the same scope. Or whether in order for us to do this, there has to be some different kind of an agreement, that's, that was my question.
So we asked to maintain.
My assumption based on past discussions about this at the board. Is that the extent of the maintenance that's required now is the result of the failure conduct to perform. Maintenance over.
Over decades.
That's my record right now, if the facts are different.
Well, I think, I think we need to, I, I think that's something we need to do a deeper dive into. We've talked about it before and I think we're really at the stage where we have to do that.
So you're saying talk about, to, to go back and, and, um, either release ourselves from the, the.
No, I, I, I just. We don't, we don't know the answer, I don't know, I mean, I, we don't know whether, whether the, 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 the situation with the dam now is a failure on our part. Or whether it's another failure, and we've talked about this before, and we just, you, you, we don't have the facts, Bob has said to us before, we don't have the facts, so I think.
The dam wouldn't be there if we didn't insist on keeping it.
Right, and then that.
That's not my, but that's not my question.
Actual question is whether these, these repair, what the extent of the repair today. Is necessitated by the failure to perform routine maintenance over the years, or is it from some other? Other fact, and it's being that happen now is outside of our, from the build of maintenance operation.
Some of the items that I mentioned are failure for routine maintenance, missing flashboards, cracking, spalling. What is not, uh, is the fact that the dam cannot pass the spillway design flood. That's a, that's a.
Say that again.
What's not is that the spillway cannot pass spillway design flood. That's nothing to do with the struggle.
That's why you need to vary.
That's why we need to see the variance because we're seeking a, uh, a deviation from their guidance. To, uh, allow the dam to be hardened on each side.
Yeah.
Uh, grounding program and a riprap channel to protect it from these, uh, the flows that are experienced during these minor storms that we get.
And so the, the water going around the dam creates more damage to the dam.
Absolutely, you could, you could have a failure or breach if you have, uh, rushing water coming around and earth and back them without, uh. Uh, reinforcing it.
And if we, if, if we don't do something, are, are we, are we, uh, uh? Do, do we might get fined or?
Right now, we're, we're not in compliance.
Okay, so, so we need to do something.
I mean, we, we, we are right now in compliance as far as a reporting criteria, we have our engineer assessment, it's been done, our E A P is updated. And our I N M, we have, uh, routine maintenance that we can start doing, there's maintenance that needs to be done at the one and two year marks, that's. You know, trimming vegetation, certain small things that our D P W can do, and then as you go more and more time, five year maintenance, that again means. Become more and more expensive items, more detailed ones.
Well, a, 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 and if they suspect that we, we begin dithering now and not, not doing it, they may, they may, they may bring the hammer down.
Yeah, they'll, they've already threatened to issue an order on consent.
Significant portion of this cost is a result of change in the regulations rather than failure of regulations.
Change in, in regulations, I don't know how, I'd have to look at, see when the regulations did kinda change, but, uh. The primary, the primary, like I said, first and foremost, the spillway cannot pass a design flood, that has to be rectified.
But it did well, probably, if it was built, it's clearly a pass never.
I guess, you know, if, yeah, maybe the design criteria back, back in, you know, when it was built, perhaps.
About the twenties.
Yeah.
So, so that made your created argument that this is not all the village's responsibility. And part of the cost is a, a result of a change in the required design of the dam.
Well, I just think we have to know that, that we're at the stage where that information has to be. Thank you.
What, what sort of timeframe do we have?
Uh, I can find out from the D E C, I'll give them a call, I mean, right now with our conversations with them, we are in compliance with the reporting, so they're not, you know. Looking at us yet, but we kind of need to make a decision.
We, we do, we not wanna test their patience.
Yeah. Uh, so the, well, conceptual, uh, option, uh, that, again, our, our consultant prepared was also a new dam. Uh, you know, basically that would require engineering studies, possible land acquisition, uh, seek or determination and terminate. Uh, this was the most expensive option.
Hmm.
Of, uh, provided, uh, and kind of the most lengthy in time, probably talking close to over ten million dollars. At a, at a timeframe of between four and a half, five, possibly six years.
And we'd have to get permission from Westchester joint waterworks to build it on their property.
Correct. And acquisition, do you have, no, this, the properties on Harrison's side.
Yeah.
Would be affected as well.
Okay. All right, so get the information, uh, I appreciate it, there are never easy choices.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
We're gonna go to items on for tonight's regular meeting. Uh, correcting November thirteenth, twenty twenty three resolution authorizing the purchase of three patrol vehicles, thank you, Greg. That says item three A.
The resolution last time.
You can speak up, please.
Yeah, there was an error on my part when I prepared the resolution last time.
Script there?
Well, a little more than that, cause I, I, I misinterpreted whether or not, uh, the board allocated. Funds in the general fund, uh, it did not, uh, so, you know, we, we need to correct that. Uh, and as I often mentioned, you know, don't think of a police vehicle like your regular passenger vehicle. Think of a police vehicle aging in dog years, cause it's an operation twenty four hours a day, seven days a week for the most part. So it's, it's not like your everyday vehicle in terms of wear and tear.
Okay. Everybody fine with that?
Yes.
Uh, declaration of surplus vehicles, there's a list and everybody have a chance to look at the list, uh, kinda aged. The youngest one being twenty thirteen. Everybody fine with selling those? Yep, okay, now there's, uh, three projects on that are joint projects of the Westchester joint waterworks. Uh, Westchester joint waterworks, a joint project is a project that all bigger municipalities, uh, share responsibility in the costs of. Uh, the one is shaft twenty two chlorination system, uh, this is, uh, when I, when I. So I have it in front of you, when I read it before, what happened is, there's an overrun on the cost, uh, because of, uh, everything's gotten more expensive. Uh, shaft twenty two is from the New York City water supply and New York City sto- stopped. Chlorinating as heavily so that we have to add chlorine in Yonkers. Uh, so that when it comes into our system, there's enough chlorine, uh, to keep the water, uh. In good shape for us, uh, there, there was years ago a facility in Yonkers, uh, that, uh, Yonkers is letting us use again. And, uh, this is, uh, updating the cost of that project. I believe we usually pay something like twenty seven or twenty eight percent, I forget off the top of my head. Uh, of these joint projects, larger share, uh, the plurality, uh, gets paid by, uh, Harrison. And then the town of Maric is a smaller share. Uh, remediation of the Westchester joint waterwork garage, uh, the, the, you know, there's, uh. Stuff, uh, asbestos and, uh, other stuff, and, uh, the garage was damaged, uh, during some of the floods. Cause if you know the area, it's right by the river over there where it floods, uh, right by the dam. Uh, that's the other capital project, and the other one is the Waverly, Waverly Avenue Bridge Water Main Replacement. Uh, there's a water main by the, that's gonna be disrupted when they, uh, remove the Waverly Avenue Bridge and build a new one. And this will, uh, pay for putting in a new one, a new water main at that site. Any questions or concerns about those projects? Okay. Uh, the next one, uh, item one for this next regular meeting, uh, is a change order to implement municipal. Municip, municip, municipality five in a department of public works, uh, Jared, you wanna explain that?
Sure, Mayor, um.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
It's just really low.
It's really low, yeah.
Let me get close to my laptop, does that look good?
Well, it sounds better, it doesn't look any better.
Walking into that one, so, since late summer, uh, probably around the middle of August, um, everyone in planning. And in building has been working with municipality five, uh, it's completely implemented and working well. And so we wanted to wait a couple of months before we added the element that we didn't add originally, cause we wanted to make sure things. Were able to get off the ground and, and move over from municipality three to municipality five. So we're asking for forty four hundred dollars as a change order for D P W to be trained and to be able to do code enforcement. Because we're actively going after Marinerick Avenue and Business District, uh, garbage. As well as people who put garbage out without containers and you can. You'll know that it's very inefficient for us to be out there at six A M, seven A M, eight A M. Send a bunch of pictures to our code enforcement officer and then he or she do all that work. Um, it's a lot easier for us to be able to do that ourselves, and in our code, I can designate individuals to write, uh, tickets. Uh, for these kinds of issues, so we're just trying to maximize efficiency by improving. The code enforcement for some of the items that everyone on the board receives my emails and my pictures as well as the department heads.
Okay. Any questions for the surgeons, for Jared, that was on the, on the tonight's agenda?
It's, it, to, in order to designate people to write tickets, do they have to get a stipend?
No, I, uh, some have to and some don't, and we already have those stipends established.
So there won't be new stipends?
No, they would just be the ones in the budget.
Okay, thank you, a- and they're, they're, they're active now or they're just?
No, they're, they're active, they do, uh, illegal dumping behind the public works building, they do, um, um. Weekend stuff, they do stuff like that, um, and this is, a lot of this is also for office staff and James. To be able to manage the information that comes in from the sanitation and or other individuals.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Any other questions for Jared on this issue? Jared, to, to write the tickets, do they have to get a certain amount of training or?
No, so, the, the building department staff gives them the training, which is pretty simple because it's an order to remedy, that's how we work. Um, and then if they don't remedy the situation, then we issue them a, a violation. So we're really working on orders to remedy at this stage with the department, uh, with the public works department. Cause we don't want public works employees to go to court and appear, so we wanna just issue the orders to remedy and hope that the warning will help. Resolve the issue, and then if it becomes a persistent problem, then a code enforcement officer who's not only trained to, to write the ticket. But also trained to, you know, appear before the court and understand what the issue is.
Good to go.
Okay, um. Anything else, any other questions?
I just had a question about item number four, the action items, that's new, new to the agenda, what was, why is, where is it? It's right after the, uh, municipality train border.
I think, we've always had that, um, that's kind of a vestige from, uh, previous, uh, iterations of the rules of the board. And I just didn't turn that off in novice.
Um, uh, may I, uh, just?
You know, I, I, I have one item on that I'd like to get because I'm not coming back.
Okay.
Yeah.
You, you have time to do this in your next meeting.
Yeah, if I, it's really, real quick, I just want a consensus, come on.
Fine, well, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, uh, uh, two, two I accessory dwelling units, this is just a request, it's a big ask for, for, uh, information from the staff.
I'm looking for just a consensus from the board to ask the staff for this information so we can, uh, begin the discussion. And, and, and that, that's the information I'm looking for. That's basically.
Those bullet points, you're looking for the bullet point, the information on five bullet points?
Yes.
Okay. If everyone agrees, we can start working on it.
Okay, all right, I'm fine with unveils, yep. Okay, we're good, uh, let's see, that was it, was it, thank you.
Uh, all right, uh, I had one item on here that I just wanna talk about before, uh, we, we have a seven thirty, uh. Seven thirty executive session where a lawyer's, uh, going to be appearing, uh, so we have to go in three other rooms. Um, and one item I wanted to talk about is speed humps in various village streets. Uh, I, I know that the traffic commissioners have gotten a lot of, uh, requests for this. Uh, you can see on Old Post, uh, Road, it's been very, very effective. Uh, that's where I go for my rest at night and you really see people slowing down. And what's gone on is that people now instinctively slow down before they hit the bump. Uh, they're not banging over the bump anymore, which makes me believe that, you know, it's changed habits, um, and, you know. I, I got, uh, correspondence, uh, from a group of folks on Wagner. Who were asking for it and a group of folks on Jefferson and, and a part on Jefferson, uh, from the firehouse down to the dead end. So, I, I know we're not gonna make any decisions here tonight, but I just, I, I, I think that speed humps have been a success. And I know they've been a success in New York City and, oh, thank you, New York City and other communities. Uh, where they have been, uh, implemented, so I, I, especially when you're repaving streets. Especially, uh, ancillary streets, uh, not, you know, this, this, this isn't something for Holstead Avenue, it isn't something from Marinerick. Uh not, you know, this this isn't something for Holstead Avenue, it isn't something from Marinerick Avenue, it isn't something for Boston Post Road. But on feeder streets, they're very, very effective. And feeder streets are usually residential uh with children playing on them and uh kids using them to access the schools. So I just ask in the future, uh if you would all bear that in mind and uh please think about putting them in. Uh we're practical. Uh because I think they're very effective and they uh make our streets safer, which is something we've all heard uh many, many times for folks uh who live in the community, especially folks with young children. That's really all I want to say about it.
Couldn't couldn't we work on making a list of streets where they're appropriate because they're appropriate some places and not other places and just have that?
I think engineer shaking his head, yes.
Yeah, I mean, they're 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 general characteristics of the type of street.
If you, I think, I think New Rochelle did a good job uh because they have an application and the application gets reviewed by DPW and um uh it 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 would correspond with the streets that that would be appropriate for speed humps. Um so if if the board would allow us to create and somewhat follow the process that um New Rochelle has already developed, I read through that um page by page and and I thought it worked really well in that regard.
Yeah, I I agree.
Yeah. They they've dealt with it wi- without going from street to street to street, you know, basically on on phone calls. Um they dealt with it pretty systematically, I think, anyway.
And it's, you know, if you drive in Manhattan uh with great regularity, almost every side street, you know, not the uh has them now.
Yeah.
And you know, all of that about all you can't plow, you know, if New York City can do it, we can do it. We can do it better.
Where I uh visit in Florida, there's a development, half of it has speed bumps, half has humps, and you can just see how much better they are.
Yeah.
It is terrific.
It is. All right, uh does somebody have the information for the executive session from this figure? Right.
Is there just advice?
We just needed the wording.
On the um, is it advice and counsel session to get updated on that?
Oh, is it?
If you have the cable TV franchise.
Counsel and cable franchises.
Uh we we're going to go into advice of counsel uh in the side room to talk with uh the attorney who's uh negotiating a contract with the cable TV people. So thank you all. I need a motion to end the work session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Jared, what's it?
Thank you, Gina. One more, one more job. It just makes sense to make a look, right?
November twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three, Board of Trustees Meeting. Uh, please join me for the Pledge of Leaders.
Hi.
What is the reasons? The United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible,天地一物.
Thank you all. There are two emergency exits, one on my right and one on my left. Use them, uh, file out, uh, calmly in the event of an emergency. If you have the cellphone, I'm sure you will do, uh, please put it on mute. Um, and I need a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor. Hi, Glenn.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Um, all right. First item on the agenda, there are no presentations for once, that's a hopeful sign. Uh, the first item on the agenda is address the board, uh, the three minute time limit. Uh, so please use your time accordingly, uh, that's three minutes, three minutes one time. Glenn.
Good evening, I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving. Um, I'm not gonna use long tonight, I really wasn't originally planning on coming, but I just wanted to, um, show my respects and thank you Tom for your service. Um, people disagree with how you're the mayor, but you know what, it's a, it's a tough job. You did the job to the best of what we thought was your abilities and we do thank you for your service. Otherwise, as, as a part of gift, I'm done for the evening.
Best gift ever, best gift ever.
It's like, it's like Christmas morning. Thank you. I will miss you. Uh, the next, the next person who would like to speak for three minutes.
Good evening Mayor and Board and, uh, hope you had all had a good Thanksgiving and, uh, thank the mayor Murphy for your service. And thank him for the effort he served. Um, sorry, I have to move forward. Something that I can say to the members of the Flood Committee and, um, we will be discussing it tomorrow night, but I'm sensitive, so I wanted to present one tonight. Uh, the thought is to get the Army Corps project going as I said at the October sixteenth meeting. And Catherine Parker is here to, to talk about possible funding through the channel. But I really don't know the details of how she would do that, but I sent, uh, my members and then Ray Lani and Mayor and Trustees an email last, I think it was last week, yeah. I asked them for four sets of funding to do, to get the Army Corps projects started. Center Avenue Bridge, Needle Lane Bridge, Open Channel across the parking lot. And Arbor Heights needs a new H and A study, if you only could, who knows about. So I'd like to just put this into the record for tonight.
Give it a sound. Thank you.
And I'd like to ask Catherine to talk about the urgency of, of doing whatever you have to do, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tony, good evening, Mayor, good evening, trustees. Um, so Tony, you asked how, how the funding goes, well, it goes very quickly. Your email that you sent this weekend to the mayor and the Board of Trustees and, and, uh, Jerry Barberio, the village manager, they acted upon your email. I received a, an email from, uh, village manager Jerry Barberio, uh, including a request, a formal request from the village of Mamaronek for, um, funding for the projects that you have listed. And he specifically, and we followed up with a conversation today on the phone. So the first two, um, uh, is that you wanted funded the Ward Avenue Bridge and the Center Avenue, um, Bridge. Both of those projects were identified by the Army Corps of Engineers. We have twelve million dollars that we have been sitting in our capital projects designated for the village of Mamaronek, Army Corps of Engineers project. So once the village gets the, the okay, then we can tap into that money and help you with that, with that first phase. Um, Mayor Murphy, thank you for your partnership and, and you had, um, had responded with a, an email, uh, actually about a month ago after, uh, uh, Tony had also reached out on behalf of, of the Flood Navigation, um, committee. And you had sent a request for additional study. Um, so that I have on my list for my requests for two thousand and twenty four. That's a, that would be a new request for funding. And in fact, the, you mentioned the, um, the Jefferson parking lot, uh, that also was new as far as, um, the, the project goes, it would be an additional study.
Right.
Uh, the village manager had put a number of a hundred and fifty to that, a hundred and fifty thousand. So I have put that together on my list. And then, um, given that there's a, a strong possibility that the, the price for the Army Corps of Engineers project is going to be, uh, increased, then we would imagine that the county share is going to be increased. So I am requesting an increase to that twelve million dollar placeholder that will be more in line with what we're probably looking at. And, um, we will start that process of negotiation with the, um, with the county executives administration, but we all know the county executive is in full support of helping. And so I think that this is really going to be, um, good for the village when we're working, you know, together in unison. I think the work that the, the Flood Committee has done in conjunction with all of you. Um, and the communication that we have had has been excellent. And that's how we keep furthering flood mitigation for the village of Mamaronek. So I will end there and just say.
Thank you, Catherine. And thank you for everything you've done for us over the years, I appreciate it.
Um, Mayor, if I can add to Legislative Parker's, um, I am going, I am going with staff, uh, county staff, uh, on Wednesday to, um, look at all the points that the Army Corps is working on, all the items that we have done, all of the river maintenance we have done. So we're going to spend an hour plus with county staff to go around and, uh, show them everything that we've been doing in the village.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
One other question.
The declaratory.
Is there, is there anything we should be doing in terms of, you know, working with the Army Corps? Because we're changing through the mechanism of the project and doing some of it ourselves with county funding.
Well, we've already, the, the Army Corps is all aware of that.
Right, but I mean, just, it's, 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 we usually, usually they want to be involved with it and, and have previously said, um, then who wants to be involved? Previously requested, previously been the body that has been in charge of the project and that it, Catherine has sent an email after the October twentieth meeting, just making sure that, um, if, if we or we with the county undertake some of the work, the Army Corps is still on board. So I just want to make it sure.
The, the Army, the Army Corps was, is, is going to come up with an agreement between the county and the state, uh, for these ancillary projects.
So technically, we've been waiting for them for that agreement and so that's why, so wouldn't it be something that we had to do? We actually waited for them.
Right.
So I think they're very much in, and I have an understanding of what every, all the plans of moving forward, even with the county.
Let's do it.
Hi, uh, my name is Alana, I'm Park Avenue. And I'm pleased I can speak out against a proposed zoning code change in the village. We should have unintended consequences of increased density and reduced quality of land. I'm talking about ADUs, accessory dwelling units. As per Trustee Young's, uh, work agenda item, I think it was postponed, you had five questions that you're starting with. But accessory dwelling units, ADUs, I'm, I'm just gonna kind of talk a little bit back, so I'm not sure everybody knows a lot about it. Um, accessory dwelling units morph single family zoned neighborhoods into multi-family neighborhoods. They essentially allow homeowners to rent out parts of their home. Picture a family moving into your neighbor's garage. Or three families living in a single family. Or a crane delivering a prefabbed trailer into your neighbor's backyard in order to house an additional family. All of these situations are currently a reality in California where ADUs are legal. It essentially urbanizes our suburb. If this proposal comes to fruition, we can expect less parking and more traffic, more noise, increased municipal expenses, more developers buying up properties with the unintended consequences of subdividing them to make a brick block. As per the proposal that was on the work agenda, ADUs, in a sense, we would be subsidizing, I'm sorry, as per that, yeah. ADUs in a sense, um, we would be subsidizing with our tax dollars those expensive. So if, because the proposal has said that we would give tax deductions to people who rent out ADUs. Uh, if we were to do that, who would pick up the slack? It would be on the backs of all of the other village taxpayers. Why would we give homeowners who rent ADUs a tax break? Landlords would are ready to collecting rents while their tenants would be increasing costs to our village. It would be increased sewage, increased garbage, it would be, uh, wear and tear on our infrastructure. Um, we're essentially offering to have single family homeowners pay for services. Um, we're essentially offering to have single-family homeowners pay for services that should be covered by the landlord. We're offering to give away other people's money. But that's beside the point. When people purchase a single-family home, they did so with the expectation, expectation for more space, for more parking, for peace and quiet. People have worked hard and have saved for years to attain their goal. It is not right to take that away. But with ADUs, single-family homeowners will pay a steep price, increased density, lower quality of life with higher taxes. Kathy Hochul's proposal for ADUs was strongly opposed by both Democrats and Republicans, and for good reason. No one wants to have their homes sacrificed. They've put away so much to be scrunched away into a high density that with all the problems that come along with ADU, ADUs, they deserve the homes they work for. I understand that you only need the revotes to put this through, but please, I'd like you to ask yourself, what would the voters want? After all, that's you, sir.
Thank you.
And Tom, it's been a while, six years, but as you've evidenced, we're approach month between me and Norm. All things are possible in the future, and I do wish you the best. Um, I have three quick things. I drove over the Waverly Avenue Bridge today. Ask the I M A to sign it for Tom.
We, we voted to approve it last, Sally, was it last Tuesday? It was Tu- Tuesday, Tuesday.
Oh, okay. So in one of the.
At, at the, when we met at one, yeah.
Um, the dam. Honey, listen to the work session. Um, I'm amazed that there's still a discussion going on about the village doing work on the dam. One is my understanding that the only responsibilities the village has to the dam is to maintain the openings that were put in it in the seventies and the grates that went over the openings. We've spent a hundred thousand dollars on engineering studies and probably a lot of time with the village engineers doing his vehicles. And it just seems like it's not our responsibility. I just don't understand why it continues. Um, and the last thing is municipality five. I heard on the work session that it's fully operational. We've now bought municipality five twice. Um, my understanding is municipality five, one of the functions was always intended to create a public interface for building apartment records. As far as I know, that hasn't been done. Is that still one of the intents of municipality five?
That's a Jerry question.
I, I understand. I'm not sure he's still on.
Are you asking Jerry to answer, Norm?
I don't think Jerry's on. I, well, I can't tell.
And the clock's running.
Continue your statement, please.
That's all. I just, um, as I said, the dam, let's stop spending money on something that's not our responsibility. And municipality five, if the intent was to create a public interface, we should because the building apartment can't assume to produce records otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board? Good night, Tony.
Robin, Charles Sabro for former court. I have a, a Mamaronek library hat. Uh, lots of you have seen me wearing this hat. I got this a year ago when the library devoted best library in Westchester. You can get it for fifteen dollars. Go to the library. Um, I had tried to use the library as much or more than anybody that I know. And I could spend hours talking about all the wonderful things that the library does. The library is, is having an important election on Wednesday, December sixth at the library from seven AM to nine PM. You'll be voting on, uh, appointing, uh, voting for, for trustees, library trustees, and voting whether or not to approve the budget for li- for the library for the following year. The library, I don't know what you mean, the, the, the library has made significant progress in trying to figure out its financial house. And it's, it's critical that this budget be approved in order for them to continue making progress in getting the library back uh, where it belongs. So if you're unable to get to the library on Wednesday, December sixth, you can go to the library, go to the front desk, ask them for an absentee ballot, and fill out an absentee ballot and vote for the library. I, I love the library and I'm encouraging everybody to go out and support your library. It is a wonderful, one of the best resources we have in this community, and we all should, all should support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, Amy Sisden, Skibo Lane. Um, I wanted to just speak about the D E I resolution that I saw. And first I want to applaud our village as of next Monday. On our board, we'll have three of five women and three of five people of color. Um, so I want to celebrate that. Uh, however, one thing we have failed on is antisemitism. And there was an issue that came up that local clergy had alerted many of you, all of you too. We received emails and those still have gone unaddressed. So I believe any D E I initiative should include the B O T and should include training on antisemitism. I believe it's a basic courtesy for anyone on our board and our mayor. Uh, when local clergy avails themselves to write to you, to respond, uh, and to take them up on the opportunity to learn. We have a large Jewish community in our, uh, village. There's a record about of antisemitism. And I would encourage you all to be trained so we can all move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rega?
Yes.
Let me call.
Hopefully everyone has a great Thanksgiving.
You too.
Yep. I'm going to turn to Dave's. Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome, guys.
Timing is everything, right, Lou?
Yeah, timing is everything.
So Carl Rock on Holland Avenue. Um, so this has to be a reference to the Marshall Mall, but never taken that line, that right? And I attended the last meeting environmental, who was there, or was there? It's real and effective factor. So I just think when Holland said, you know, I'm going to save. Uh, instead of battery, there is another solution. So one more solutions and we can save. And I'm going to ask Lou and Nora to read the highlighted, um, information.
This has been directed.
Did this, this us two?
Together.
If you guys want to read.
Who wants to read aloud, aloud? Together or separately?
Separately. It's two word, basically. So this comes from Clean Cities. So it has to do with, uh, propane, basically, for the rider instead of battery. Battery will take place in future and I'm all for it, but right now the technology is not there to do the same job as a gas. Lower base. So what I'd like you to do, either Nora or Lou, the first one, where it says propane and you can read the highlight there, if possible.
Okay, I'm happy to start. Okay.
Sorry, guys.
So propane, propane engine, propane engines can produce lower amounts of some harmful emissions, including carbon dioxide. The cleaner burning nature of propane may result in reduced maintenance requirements such as less frequent oil changes and extended mower life.
Okay, so that's a possibility. And you could, uh, basically find for machine, new machine. Um, number one, John Deere's what we got. So that's the first one. And then the second one, basically, it has to do with the cataly-
I feel like I'm in court. Can you, you know, reading, reading my grand jury testimony?
If you guys learn some of that.
Uh, um, uh, all right, this is, uh, unusual, but, uh, okay. Cadillac Exhaust Products is a custom manufacturer of high-performance three-way catalytic converters for small and large engine applications. A three-way catalytic converter is designed to operate on natural gas, propane, gasoline fueled spark ignition engines and will provide high-performance reductions in all major exhaust gas emissions.
Adaptive, basically, and we stick on our current equipment, which is going to help the environment as well. So.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, Carl.
All right, uh, we'll, um, we'll, we give this to the staff and see if they'd like, like it, all right?
That's it, Tom. Quickly. Thank you for the last six years. Thank you for all the years of, you know, trustee. That'll be here, also the town of Mariner. Thank you very much for sitting in all of this.
And thank you for your friendship with the head.
It's been great.
Anybody else would like to address the board?
Um, what I'm addressing is the issue of the proposal to build a unit across from the police station that was, I believe was a hundred eighty units going to increase the number of residents and lose parking spaces. We don't need more residents. We need more parking spaces and less residents. America's bleached and saturated. It's getting misery. We're overcrowded. The avenue is a mess. It's just, it's too much. Enough is enough. We don't need any more building. And as I said, it's just, we do not need to lose parking spaces. What should be done is that parking lot should be, I understand, it needs to be replaced. Build an additional tier because we need more parking. And that's, what should be done. Thank you.
Thank you for. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor. Randy Robinow, five forty long terrace. So, um, chatting into very many meetings and I'm not, uh, but I'm here today because uh, it's the end of an era. And for some, we welcome that with glee and joy. And, um, and for others, it's just a, a time of transition. So I'm hoping that the good spirit and a really quite beautiful sense of community that many found this uh, particular season continues and goes forward with, with, um, good intentions and a continued sense of community that was so, um, quite frankly, uh, touching and brought together. Um, and in that spirit, I'm hoping you'll, um, support your new board. But I myself have to just personally tell you my experiences with our outgoing mayor, Tom Murphy. I met Tom, it's hard to believe, twenty-eight years ago. Our children were in Murphy's school together and, um, and I was, uh, you know, I was, he was just a regular guy. And, uh, as I got to know him and I served with him as a trustee in the village of Mariner, that got me very impressed. And Tom showed, uh, a good sense of knowing what was right and wrong. And, um, and I really saw it in my mind that he had good judgment. And I thought he made ethical decisions, but they're always benefiting the village. We work together, uh, as a board of Democrats, but believe me, by no means a board of, uh, everyone agreed with everything. So, um, Tom, I just want to tell you what a outstanding mayor you've been, um, and what a long list of accomplishments you have. I think it's now time for you to look into the next chapter of your life. And in that life, you certainly have earned and I think deserve some peace. So I'm hoping some of the kindness that he now deserves will come his way. And I want you to enjoy the rest of your life, so for the rest of your life. And I want you to find what truly brings you joy, your family, your friends, and your walks in nature and the, and the beauty of that. Because in these things, Tom, you're a very rich man.
Yeah, thank you.
So thank you for your service. Thank you for your integrity. And, um, I just wish you the very best.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you for your friendship.
Hi, uh, Alyssa Miller, two two one, whoever go. Um, I concur. Everything, uh, Randy said. I'm here for you tonight, Tom. Um, it has been six years since I actually stepped into this room, since I served. Um, and I have really been grateful for your leadership. Um, for getting things done, for showing up, for listening to people even when they didn't agree with you. You never kicked them out or avoided them. You embraced those and you listened and you did whatever you could in your way to make things right for this village. And as a result of that, there's so many things that are getting done that I worked on for ten years in this village. We have the Army Corps of Engineers finally coming through. We just heard Catherine Parker tonight going to get some more money for us. You've got, you know, the, the bridge on Boston Post Road, we're getting a sidewalk. You know, that was something I ran on many, many years ago. Um, I can't even begin to list all of your accomplishments because I didn't even write them down. But I, um, I hope that I speak on behalf of so many people who couldn't make it out tonight to thank you from the bottom and top of our hearts for everything. Um, from even, you know, the time you served as a trustee way, 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 when I moved into this village about twenty years ago. You always have crutchable on the train, one of the community. You were always there. And so thank you. Thank you for being someone that people could go to, that people could be heard, be seen, and for someone who can get things done. I applaud you.
Thank you.
Um, hi, uh, Hillary from initial one fifty-one, Benamore. Um, many of us are grateful for all that you've done in the last six years. Especially as you led us through the flooding, through the flooding and COVID. You had the vision to stand up in the projects that many were afraid wouldn't work out. I am especially grateful that you supported and helped to elect trustees, Gaisa Reed and Rawlings to the board. And that you've always been kind to them whilst they found their way. And you, that you were. Sorry, Lou.
That's song two out of three of that.
I know that your many years of service to the village will be remembered for many years to come. This year since having, this year since having the new board. So much progress has been made in the community, community. Things were stuck for too long. I hope you will not be a complete stranger, as I know many of us will need your wisdom and sage from time to time. I wish you well in your future endeavors and know that whatever you decide to do will be the grace of good for all. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. You're, you're old girl. Wake you. A lot of this drinking would be at my.
Good evening, um, Alex Gross, Valley Road. I was made aware of that at the work session earlier today. Some original legislation we have discussed as to the inclusionary zoning practices within the Mariner. Um, as a member of this community and have a member of the school districts, needs to be a grown-up, have experienced support of this legislation. And a member of inclusionary practices, has to do with, um, AMI, uh, area meaning income. Can you access these units as well as the percent that is going to be made to be affordable in developments? Um, there are over four hundred different inclusionary zoning programs in this country, and they're expanding every year. But these programs only work under two key factors, and that is these policies are not only being enacted, they're only being enforced, and that these policies are targeting the right people who deserve to live in this community and deserve to live in affordable units. Because every community needs affordable units and is up to us, the members of this community, to make sure that these, these units are maintained and as a legislative, to look like any other unit within our community, on affordable or market rate. Um, and I just want, I hope that this can be put into actual policy, you know, we can expand and uh, further strengthen our inclusionary zoning program within the Mariner. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you all very much. Uh, let's get to the agenda. All righty. Uh, the first is a public hearing on P L L Z. Alrighty, uh, the first is a public hearing on PLLZ. A lot of, a lot of laws this year. And use application requests, Bob, this is just, uh, to correct, please.
Well, it's, it's to, to clarify and make a comment on the face of the code. That the law that you passed, uh, changing what a notice required to, that supersede state law, if you go right under, under the new law. Question came up after it was passed, whether it superseded, the law itself provided that it superseded. But that piece of law is not a codifier. So this codifies it and makes it clear to anyone who looks at the code in the future, that these provisions are what you have to follow, not the separating those.
Gotcha, and, and ours are more stringent than state one?
They're different, they're, they're more modern, they, they do away with publishing a newspaper, which is costly and, and I think you both can judge with the same.
Yeah. I, I can't remember the last time I actually had a paper newspaper.
What, what comes after PPLC?
What?
We're already well past it.
Okay.
All right, uh, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So, second.
All in favor? Any questions or concerns? Anybody in the audience wish to address this issue? All right. Anybody from the board wish to address this? No, all right, I'll contend a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Would anybody like to make a motion to adopt this law?
I move to adopt the PPLZ twenty twenty three. P, uh, PLLZ.
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is two A. Abstract vouchers, uh, tonight's vouchers are six hundred and three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety one cents. And questions or concerns? Everybody in the audience, questions, concerns?
Cooper Teager, um, seems fine, there are two items for Dana Pest Control, one is a monthly maintenance proposal. Um, the other one is a work order requested by AD, not sure that the AD is. On the first, one of the maintenance proposals, I think this is the third monthly maintenance proposal that we've seen on the, on the bills. Does the board know what this monthly maintenance proposal is for?
About this AD.
Okay, so again, you're supposed to know what you're paying for, um. I don't think it's good to use taxpayer money and pay for things you don't know what you're paying for. Um, and the second one, who is AD? In that? Work order requested by AD charged at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Is that for one person, two people, seems like a pretty heavy rate.
And what page are you looking at?
I'm sorry, page five, middle of the page, two Dana Pest Control items.
See, I can't even see it.
Again. Our money without knowing what you're spending. Um, page eight, Abrams Fensterman. Uh, fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars on Village of the Mariner, meet Teager, or Teager be Village of the Mariner. And I'm sure the public doesn't know, and I'm not sure if the board knows, but, um, before this case was filed. Um, my attorney spoke with the village attorney and offered to settle it. Um, and as my understanding is, the village attorney turned down that proposal without consulting with the board. Um, which I don't think is really appropriate, I think an attorney is supposed to bring any offer of settlement to the board. So I'm not sure you should pay that. Page nine, colored sessions. Audit and foil for stormwater MS four. I'm not sure why the consulting engineers working on the MS four, but today I received the audit from the DEC of the MS four program and the village received it unsatisfactory. The lowest grade, as it were, that you can get. Um, so there's work to be done clearly, um, and I hope this quarter, the new board will get on with it. Us, um, associated with that is Dennis Drogen.
Thank you.
Is the first person I know of who's gotten training in MS four. Um, one more item and I'll be out of here.
Yeah, your time is up, so please.
Live view technologies, are we paying them monthly? Is that what it is? And the other question is, can we remove these cameras? These are the river cameras that didn't seem to work all that well. So the question is, is this a monthly or a new fee? And again, there's more, Fred Cook.
Your time was up a while back. Please, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I would just ask that you remove the item, you don't know what you're paying for.
Thank you.
Supposed to by law know what you're spending your money on, thank you.
Need a motion to approve? The second?
Second.
Call the roll, Sally.
Trustees Rawlings?
Yes.
Yansari?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Lucas?
No.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you. Hey. Report from the village manager, Jerry?
Uh, Mayor, I have two items that we're filing for the record. One of them is an intermunicipal agreement with the DEC for our recycling app that, uh, a lot of municipalities, I think almost all municipalities in Westchester. Uh, contribute to, as well as the shared service agreement for, um, sustainable Westchester for the waste and recycling communication platform. And I hope I get a chance later on this evening, um, to talk about, well, maybe I'll just do it now. So I've never worked with someone and I've worked with two county executives and you know, one of them I worked very closely with and two mayors. Um, and you're the third. And I've never worked with someone who's been so engaged and so responsible, uh, to the people of the community. That's not to say that the other mayors were not, it's just that you were so much and the way you supported our staff and the way you showed up and never left during our emergencies and some of the things that you really respected as far as our form of government to, um, to make sure that you spoke to me before you spoke to a staff member or how you supported certain things in the village, um, that staff just couldn't figure out or just couldn't deal with because it was on a personal level and some of us are not so personable. Um, and it, it worked really well and I'm glad that you have plans for the future, I'm glad you got two grand boys, I'm glad you have family close by that stayed close by. Um, because now you can show them, uh, the amount of time and attention you show to this community. Uh, and it's really been great to work with you since, um, since February of, of two thousand nineteen, we were, we went through a COVID pandemic, we went through SIS, we went through Ida and we went through Ophelia and, um, I'm hoping that, you know, when you leave, we never have another disaster again, but the reality is, um, we're gonna miss you when we do and I appreciate everything that you've done for us.
Thank you, I, I, I appreciate and enjoyed working with you and, uh, frankly, the village of America has the best staff of any municipality in Westchester County.
Thank you, we make sure.
It was a privilege to get you to know you all.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for that, uh. No, no, he, he, he hit it all, old business. Uh, resolution authorizing funding for capital projects for the parks department, ride on mower. Okay, uh, we, at, 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 at the work session, we talked about the ride on mower. And this is a complicated, uh, piece of equipment, it isn't just, you know, a, a lawn mower. Uh, the head of the parks department was, uh, the rec, the parks department, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. An was here and he, he explained, uh, in his view, uh, the utility of getting the, uh, the, uh, diesel powered mower and because it, it would allow them to do more and it would allow them to, uh, know that they have a product that's going to be able to mow as he poured out the hundred and forty-four acres.
Yeah.
That they mow.
Week.
Every week.
Week.
Uh, so, you know, respecting, uh, his expertise. Uh, I, I think the board, uh, is, is leaning toward, uh, the diesel mower.
Or defer, right?
Yeah, please.
Deferring to the staff on this, though, now two weeks ago, you know, the, the, some folks in the audience had kind of sticker shock because this thing costs, the, the thing that we were gonna buy was forty-one grand, well, this one ain't that much cheaper, I mean, these, these are expensive pieces of equipment, so, uh, so, um, it's not like we're, we were gonna spend forty-one grand on a piece of electric equipment and the other one, who cost five, no, I, I think it cost what, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-eight?
About thirty-four thousand.
What?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, alright, so.
There was thirteen thousand dollar difference.
Yeah, thirteen thousand dollars, so, uh, so it, it's, um, you know, we, we gotta do what we gotta do, so, there you go.
Okay.
And we have not costed out Carla's suggestion. We could do that.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, uh.
Did you hear that committee for the environment?
All right, any, any? Any questions, concerns about this?
No, giving me, giving me, uh, the lead time on buying this, they need it, uh, we, we should just, uh, just get it done, I think.
Good night, kids.
Good night.
If we order it now, it'll come in probably around the beginning of May, May fifteenth, and that's exactly when things get, you know, things get crazy at the Parks Department.
Mowing season.
And I will say, we, we did say last week that we were gonna discuss it at this, at the, usually we discuss these kinds of things at work session, but we said we would discuss it at this session because there were so many people who wanted to speak on it and some of you are here tonight, so I just, I wanted to make, you know, and it's a piece of equipment that we have to replace, the, we spent fifteen thousand dollars repairing the one we have. So, it doesn't make sense to keep, keep the one we have, we have to replace it. It's, we're saving some money, but it's not an expense we can avoid.
So, so if anybody wants to talk about it, that's time.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I thought I wrote everything, you guys were here two weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm sorry, I've decided to come often to watch my money being spent, my name is Victoria, I'm on Rally Road. Um, and I, I sat there and listened to someone question the six hundred thousand dollars on no one could answer what any of that money was for and that's worrisome. And then I keep hearing about Dana Pest Control, the rats are out of control, so clearly Dana is not doing what they should do, so you know, everybody here, I'm sure goes to the supermarket and sees the lobster that they want, but they can't afford it, right? And I get it because we're doing the same in my house, my kids love filet mignon, it can't happen, right? And I appreciate that you guys really thought about the purchase of the mower and made a different decision and that is great. That's, we need more of that, but again, we just paid six hundred thousand dollars and nobody knew what those things were for. Why are we paying bills that we don't know what they're for? Who knows what they're for, those people on Zoom, like, who knows what, the money, the money is not flowing forever, right? We have to watch our money, all of us, I'm sure everybody in this place is watching what they spend at the supermarket. Connet is through the roof, the waterworks is through the roof, we all have to watch our money. And again, there's Dana Pest Control. Is anybody following up, I think the last meeting they were charging us for like a checkup fee, don't they get paid enough that they're gonna pay more? Who's watching over them, who is checking, we have rats in daylight strolling down the avenue. So what is the, are they effective that we can pay them? I, I mean, it's, it's sad and you know what, we are one of the Mariner, we are all here for the best of our village and that's the way it should be, we should, you know, us against you or anyone else. You've been elected and yes, you make hard decisions, nobody likes, nobody's gonna agree with everything, that's okay, but we have to do better. We have to pull back on our spending and we have to consider all these zoning laws that we're changing. Because we love the Mariner, everybody wants to live here, but the reality is, if something is only this big, it can't keep switching people in, density matters. AD use, I'm against that too, I've said it before, I'll say it again, I come from the city, I've watched my neighborhood. It's destroyed, take a fifteen minute round ride down to the Bronx, you'll be like, wow, we don't want that to happen to the Mariner. We can't build on every empty space, we have to consider people that are here. We all want things we can't have, yes, affordable housing, but we can't, what kind of lottery is it? If we're telling the Mariner residents that they're getting it, sounds like a crooked lottery to me, a lottery is a lottery. You can't guarantee anybody's gonna get a seat in a lottery, right? So I don't know about the whole, we need to rethink it, two proposals, it's not enough, we should have more. And why aren't we considering more senior living? So maybe these are other things that we can talk about. But again, this spending and good luck to you, Mayor Murphy, and thank you for serving our community.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liam Robert Egan from the Committee for the Environment, um, so I was at the work session, uh, I'm, you know, I'm uh, sympathetic to the argument that the technology might not be there yet for an electric mower. I think what disappointed me was was no, there was a cost analysis of the upfront costs, not the necessarily the operational return on this. Okay, the fact that we spent fifteen thousand dollars repairing a mower last year suggests that the gas option has got a lot of downside different costs. Um, and I think like at the general rule, I would encourage you to be forward thinking. Okay? I mean, we've gotta do everything we can to review our carbon footprint. And then I was a little disappointed at the work session, we had a presentation on the new buildings and there wasn't a lot in there about how sustainable it is, how energy efficient it would be, and I've asked as a member of the Committee for Environment for put some input on that and haven't had much of a response. So, you know, this particular decision, maybe it's too early. But just, I think we need to be much more forward thinking.
Thank you. Thank you.
And, uh, thank you, Tom, for your service. Thank you all for your service, the juniors going to be serving. Whatever the politics, I do appreciate the time and the effort and the energy that you guys put in. You don't get a lot of thanks for uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Mentioned I'm looking forward, and I know, this is just a comment of what you said. Um, people tend to look at, at this as people who are already here and people who are not here. And what they don't realize is that we're all just passing through and, and twenty years from now, there'll be different people here. And, uh, that's, that's the village we're building, right?
Hi, I'm Alyssa Miller and, um, in regards to the Committee for the Environment, by the way, um, Lou and, uh, Ronnie and Manny, if so wish, and have a need for Committee for the Environment and be interested to serve, um, as a matter of fact, I work on a lot of sustainability practices in the data center industry. And there are ways that you can create open space to have carbon sinks and dedicate natural preserves so that you can offset your carbon output as a village. And so when we think about forward thinking initiatives, how do you create a symbiotic preserved land that is committed to enabling the capture of carbon so that you can do things that aren't yet ready, like having diesel engine and propane powered.
like having diesel engine and propane powered solutions, because electric isn't there yet. We don't have enough solar, we don't have enough options, and the options that we do have are very expensive. And so I applaud the village for having, um, sensitivity to this. And, um, I would be willing to help with some of the expertise that I have in helping the village have a more sustainable future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Need a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? No votes?
No.
Will be? Resolutional, resi-funded, funding for capital project for recreation tour worker. Uh, Jerry, you wanna explain this?
Uh, Mayor. So, am I muted? No, I'm not muted. This is a utility vehicle for the recreation staff who manages the beach for one hundred days. And this version of it, the twenty thousand dollar version of it, um, based on the feedback that we received at the last meeting, would also be dual purpose where we would be able to uh, do winter, um, uh, ice and snow cleanup with it as well. Um, and also put it out to, um, the fire department or any other um, department that needs, uh, a utility vehicle, because some of our events are very expansive.
And we talked about this in a work session extensively with, uh, Jason Penta, who's the head of Recreation. Any questions or concerns? Anyone want to comment?
Well, I think we should probably explain a little bit more about what it is, because Jason gave us a good explanation, and it's, um, it's, it's, it's a machine we haven't previously purchased, but we have a small sort of utility cart that we're using, um, in, that we're using for, um, other, we're using for other, um, events, and it's really causing wear and tear on that. It's not meant for what it's used for, so this is something that allows the, um, rec department to either, either.
And other departments.
Well, to either, either help or lend it to other departments for sidewalk cleanup for a variety of things, including snow. So, it, it, I think it's a new piece of equipment that's gonna be used by a, a, a group of different departments, and it's gonna save another piece of equipment that we have.
Yeah, currently the Recreation Department has a, um, a people mover, a, a four or five person um, golf cart, and because it's big, it gets used for some uses that may end its useful, uh, existence, uh, uh, a little bit earlier than it should. It's very valuable to us to have it as a people mover, especially during large events, and if someone gets hurt, which we've used in the past.
Does anybody make a motion?
Need a motion?
Some moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, five A. Diversity Equity Inclusion Training for volunteer boards and committee members, and this also includes the board of trustees, doesn't it, while?
Originally, no, this one, just the first one that we passed, we passed the, the one for the trustees and the staff was passed a while ago. This one is specifically for, um, individuals who are on boards and all committees.
Especially decision makers, right? Yeah. Okay, uh, questions or concerns? I'll make the motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ronnie, thank you for bringing us the board's attention.
And Jerry, we think the training will start in January.
Yeah, so we're trying to make sure, you know, we had to wait for the new board to get sworn in, or the new electeds to get sworn in, those kinds of things. And it will, um, uh, and all the commission member changes. So, we'll be starting in January with them. Uh, we already have a schedule set up with, uh, with staff.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, the, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, scheduling a public hearing for P L L A A. The, uh, public hearing will be scheduled for December eleventh, just the next regular board trustee. Okay, uh, we, we passed the leaf flow law, uh, a while back, uh, but this is kinda some tweaks that needed to be done. I don't need to, I, I got it. I, uh, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Five C, streamline solar permit, this is something that, uh, our friends at the Committee for the Environment were, uh, sponsoring, and I think it's a really good idea. This would, uh, uh, make it a lot easier to, uh, put up solar panels on your house, uh, you wouldn't have to go to the Board of Architecture Review. Uh, the, uh, Building Department would be doing it. Is that right, Bob?
Yeah, that's correct, as long as you met the criteria, that's all.
Right, okay. Excellent. It's, it, it, it streamlines the process and skips the stack. Uh, I need a motion?
So moved.
And the schedules the public hearing also for the eleven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Design Services Proposal for Palmer Avenue Crosswalk at the Marinac High School. Uh, this is really for crosswalk by way Walters. I, I'm very glad that we are using the traffic consultant for this, because this is a very dangerous area. Uh, there was a child killed there, uh, a long time, not a long time ago, since I moved up here, so within the last thirty years. There was a child killed there. Uh, if you go by there, uh, it's when school's open or on a busy Saturday, there's people running back and forth across Palmer Avenue. And it, it, it's, it's a hard sight line. Right, so if you're coming out of Rich Bell, you, you're just coming up on them, and if you're coming the other way, you're, you're coming from a bend. And, yeah, there's a lot of people crossing with their kids and all. So, if we're gonna do a crosswalk, though, we have to do it really smart. Because we don't want people, encourage people across when it's not safe, right? So, we have to do more, maybe bump out, uh, with special signage and everything, and so I'm really glad that we're taking the time and not just painting a crosswalk there, but doing the design to make it safe. Because I think it's, it's needed, but it's, uh, it's, it's, it's a tricky place. So, anybody have any questions or concerns?
Just thanking the traffic committee for being, um, diligent about pushing this.
Yes. Yeah. Because there, there was a crosswalk there, and, and, and when, when a person got killed. So, I think they took it out because it was encouraging people to cross. And then, so, I, I think this is the best resolution. Anyway, I'd happily make the motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five E, Sheldon River Flood and Land Use Assessment Report. Good night, Carl, have a good one, buddy.
My, Carla, thank you.
Jerry, you want to talk with us?
Mayor, I wanna give it to Dan, because there's some brick funding involved and a commitment from twenty twenty. I think he'll follow it a little bit better than I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received a, uh, grant from New York State in twenty twenty to conduct an open space acquisition study along the Sheldon Drake River. This is a project that had been identified in our comprehensive plans, several plans. And, and our hazard mitigation plan. After we were awarded the grant, uh, New York State retained, uh, a firm, uh, called S L R to do a flood mitigation study of the Marinac and Sheldon Drake Rivers. And a lot of the work that S L R did as related to the Sheldon Drake River really was consistent with what we were looking to do with this grant. So, uh, we had discussions with S L R, uh, while they were completing the report, and we wanted to retain them because they had all the data with, there was, it could be no time to uh, bring another engineer up to speed on it. Uh, they completed their report in September of this year. Uh, we received a proposal from them in October to move forward with this project. Uh, the original grant was for a seventy-five thousand dollar project, uh, of which we were seeking fifty-two thousand dollars approximately in grant funding, and the board had committed to providing eighteen thousand dollars, uh, for the required match. Um, subsequent to that, because of the number of awards that the state, uh, gave out, there was about thirty-seven thousand dollars left, or thirty-two thousand dollars left, and if we wanted to move forward, the remaining balance was gonna be on the village. Uh, we did, the proposal we received from S L R was for seventy-five thousand dollars, which is consistent with our original grant proposal. And, uh, we're looking to move forward with that. Uh, the grant agreement that we have with New York State requires that we expend all the funds by December of twenty twenty-four. So, we're looking to get moving on this, uh, pretty quickly, assuming the board approves this.
No, go ahead.
Okay, um.
Give three minutes.
Yeah, I don't know if this is the same topic, but our committee has, we did a report on the throwaway, the effects of the throwaway. And we passed a resolution at, it was a previous meeting, the last meeting, asking, since, like you say, so I don't know if this is the same thing or not, but.
It's, it's not the same thing, but it is actually, I think it's very consistent with what
Okay.
the presentation you made at work session on the Greenway, because a lot, a lot of what you're talking about was there may be need to acquire property along the Sheldon Drake, and this is kinda part of that, because.
So, what, what, so, um, this was never formally presented to the board, which was an analysis that we did of the effects of the throwaway on flooding in the Marinac. The report was shared with the board, but it hasn't been presented. Um, it's been presented to my committee and it was presented to the flood committee, no, no, you were there, Lil, uh, Lil, you were there. And, um, so, the, the, so, the, so, in short, the throwaway is twenty-eight point two acres of impervious surface. There's no mitigation whatsoever, the water that falls on that, it goes straight into the highway, because it was built in the nineteen fifties. So, that's one piece of it. The second piece, which is a little more complicated, is the historical piece, that when the throwaway was built, they impacted two huge storage areas, one of which is Gardens Lake, the other of which is, is Genny Pond. Both of which held back in the fifties a whole lot more water than they do now. Um, the, in, so in the report that I, that I have mentioned again, um, I went back and I went through their documents, the throwaways documents, about what they have to do when they build new throwaway. And they have to have zero impact, and there are statements in there that state that if they have, if they have an impact because of historical things, there may be a liability. So, we, our resolution is to ask S L R to basically validate those results. Because we've had two meetings with the throwaway, Lou was there, and Jerry was there, in which they basically said, okay, that's nice. Thank you, Missy, get a, get a hydrologist to, to back it up, and maybe we'll do something. So, that's what we need, because if they actually were to mitigate their impact, it would have a massive, in my opinion, effect on the flooding in the Marinac. And it would be actually pretty, pretty huge. So, I just wanna be clear, because it's a, it's a little complex, and I can, you know, clean it up for you a little bit, if you need. What, but specifically what we, because S L R did not address the, the highway. What they do is they simply, the throwaway, what they do is they look at the effects of the river. Well, the river goes underneath the highway, so they just ignore the highway, but it has actually enormous effect on flooding in the Marinac.
Thank you, kids.
Okay?
And I, I, I can check, but I think, uh, our village engineer, village engineer has spoken with S L R about this, I, I can confirm. And, uh, I think you received a, a copy of the letter, well, the Committee for the Environment did, of the letter that the village sent to.
Yeah.
But, I mean, and I.
We gotta move on, we got a lot more to cover. I, I need a motion.
So moved.
Go ahead. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Elizabeth, you weren't here for the, uh, uh, address the board, so I'm gonna give you an opportunity now.
Thank you, um, I lost time to the time, no excuse. I just had to rush over here to thank you for your service, Tom. You have done a magnificent job, in my opinion. You take the job very seriously, but you never take yourself too seriously. You have a sense of humor, and a sense of kindness and respect. Everyone that comes before you, and every issue that comes before you, you try to think of what, what's best for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth, God bless you, good seeing you. Okay, next, five F. Uh, Westchester Joint Water Works, uh, we, we talked about this before, these are joint capital projects that all three municipalities uh, have a share in, uh, because the projects benefit, uh, the whole water system, the totality of the water system. Uh, the first up is the Waverly Avenue Bridge, uh, water main replacement. Uh, when they, they're doing over the Waverly, Waverly Avenue Bridge, there's a water main that now goes under it. Uh, so, the, this is the time now to, because they, they can't rebuild the bridge where the water main is, uh, because there's new wing walls, so they have to put in a new water main, uh, at that bridge, which goes, it's a sixteen inch water main, which is, you know, pretty substantial. Uh, and it's a thirty-five, three hundred fifty thousand dollar product, the village's share is ninety-five thousand two hundred. Uh, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is another Westchester Joint Water Works project, it's a shaft two chlorination, shaft twenty-two chlorination. Shaft twenty-two is, uh, New York City water. Uh, it is coming from, uh, the, uh, New York City reservoir system upstate. This shaft, uh, comes down through Yonkers, uh, a while back, New York City stopped, uh, or, or lessened the chlorination of the water coming down from the reservoirs. So, but, but by the time it gets to Yonkers, uh, it is diminished. So, before it, it kinda makes a left and comes, uh, into our community, uh, it has to be chlorinated again. So, we, we, we have a facility in Yonkers, uh, where they're adding a chlorination state, uh, station for the whole, uh, the whole three communities. Uh, so this is, uh, the village's share, it's a million dollar product, the village's share would be two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. I'll make the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, resolution accepting Westchester Water Works joint capital project redemption, uh, Westchester Joint Water Works garage. Uh, this garage, uh, is right by the dam, uh, floods quite often. Uh, it has asbestos in it that needs to be remediated and other project, uh, problems that need to be, uh, addressed to keep it a viable garage. Uh, the cost of the project is a hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, the village's share is thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. I'll make the motion, second, all in favor?
I have a comment.
Municipal, Municipal five for D P W.
Sorry, I've been spamming here.
Nah, okay, life goes on. Um, Municipal five for D P W, resolution authorizing.
You can not call for public comment.
And, and, right, I made a mistake. You know what, I made a mistake, and I'm not going backwards, we're going forward. You could, you could do it, you could do it at, uh, the address to the board.
No, I'd like to do it now.
I'd like to do it now, but you don't get everything you want in this world.
Okay.
Uh, change order, request to implement Department of Public Works Enforcement module in municipal. This was explained.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Surplus vehicles. Uh, resolution authorizing the sale of surplus vehicles. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven vehicles. When the village, uh, is done with the vehicle, it has to be auctioned off, uh, to the highest bidder. Everybody have any questions or concerns?
Nope. Will we authorize the sale?
I'll second. All in favor? E D vehicles, resolution correcting, uh, November thirteenth, resolution authorizing purchase of police patrol vehicles. Dan, you wanna talk about this?
Yeah, I, I had a brain lapse, uh, whenever with the resolution for the last meeting. Uh, I had said that it, there, it was funded through the general fund, but it's actually not, so uh, has to be, uh, we're asking the board to, um, revise the resolution to fund it through, uh, the capital budget.
Any questions or concerns?
So, we're gonna have to issue debt to do that.
Or, or, uh, uh, surplus, yeah.
Or surplus, yeah. And Dan, Dan, I gotta tell you, you don't make too many mistakes, so I was surprised.
Yeah.
I'll try harder next time.
I made a mistake once. I know that punchline. Uh, I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Uh, next up. Six A is communication on board. And once again, it's a three minute limit.
Yeah, so I'll make comments about all the Westchester Joint Water Works.
Um, you have three minutes, Mr. Tigger.
Okay, can we start over?
No, just get, just get going.
Okay, so on joint products, I'm projects, I'm not sure why this board's in voting. That's a, the authority of the joint water works, local projects, yes, you vote on. But specifically, and I'm sure this applies to all these projects, were any of these done? Awarded under competitive procurement as the law requires. You know, Mr. Mayor, you sit on that floor.
So you, people know, I don't answer Mr. Tigger because anything you say to Mr. Tigger.
Okay.
Gets used against a lawsuit.
During the work session, you discussed that part of the work. On the last.
I know, sir.
Due to Ida damage. And I'm not sure if you pay attention at the waterworks. But this is what the minutes said. It was emphasized that these conditions and the repair was. Being proposed are separate from and unrelated to the damage caused by Hurricane Ida.
Uh, I did not say anything about Hurricane Ida. I said that the building floods. I never said Hurricane Ida.
Okay, so back to the question, competitive procurement is designed to protect the taxpayers. From malfeasance in the contract. Awarding. You probably awarded a million dollars in contracts here. Do you know if any of those contracts were awarded through competitive procurement? You know, because if. If um, what's your favorite phrase? That um.
Let's come up with.
Is. Foreshadowing or something. Westchester Joint Water Works has never awarded contracts for construction work through competitive procurement. They give them and they award them based on the emergency contract. Which by logic has very high prices. And it doesn't serve ratepayers of the village of the Mariner well. So I'm hoping. Under. The new leadership in the village, this issue will be raised to the waterworks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, Amy Siskin again. I just have a question. We have a village manager who is also the highest paid village manager in the county. Um, a lot of folks during the pandemic were able to work virtually. But we're all now back in person, so. My question is, are you planning to come and do what we're paying you to do? And part of these meetings every two weeks is addressing. The community, which hasn't, in the last few meetings happened either. So I I understand you've resigned in some future period in time, but until such time. I think it would be professional, since you're the highest paid in the county, to actually to show up and do your job like the rest of us do. So I don't know what the plan is. I'm hoping the new mayor will enforce this. But um, I I don't think we should be paying you if you're not showing up. Thank you.
Yeah, there you go. Uh. Anyone else? Okay. Alright, um. Okay. It was like. Uh, reports from the clerk treasurer. Uh, I'll read this for you, Augie. File for the record, library board ten resolution. File for the record, certificate. Uh, from Justice Gallagher for CGE records. And notice of resignation by village prosecutor. Apparently the village is looking for a new village prosecutor. Alright. Uh. Go ahead.
I I'm sorry, I missed the.
You, yeah, you were there, but okay, but you can do it now.
Um, I attended the work session and this session. I didn't hear anything about the Labor League project, and and the reason I'm asking that is. We were all disappointed that the project was halted. I read the um, contract that was prepared by the town's attorney. For. Getting the work done with between the town and the village. Has that been signed? Is the work going forward? And what to the?
I think Nora brought that up in the.
We started working it up and it was.
So if you did, I I I apologize, I didn't.
Wait, so we.
I did.
We we um, approved an agreement between the village and the town. Last Tuesday, the twenty-first before the, before we had the um, second hundred tier presentation. But you know, I.
That agreement was negotiated uh, with by myself and the village attorney and village staff. And Jamie, the supervisor of town and her staff. The night before election, uh, three and a half hours. And that was the agreement that was uh, approved the other night.
I think it's on backup for the meeting of. November twenty-first. It's not, right, it's on the website. It's backup, right? Wouldn't. Yeah, that was in the, yeah, yeah, it should be, yeah.
Alright, uh, reports from village attorney? Uh. Minutes of recreation. Minutes of the Recreation and Parks Committee of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Minutes of the Planning Board Meeting of. June fourteenth and June twenty-seventh, July twelfth and July twenty-sixth, September thirteenth and twenty-seventh. And October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. And minutes of the Committee for the Meeting of the Environment on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh. Okay, I just want to end by saying, you know, it has been a pleasure and a privilege uh, to be mayor of the village of the Mariner. Um. I uh, have enjoyed working with so many of you and getting to know so many of you. And uh. I I I leave with nothing but fond memories. And uh. I wish you all the best of luck in the future. I wish the new mayor and the board the best of luck in the future. I will not be one of these mayors uh, that sits on the sidelines and snipes. Uh, I will be one of those mayors that you can call up and get a confidential uh, opinion uh, anytime you need it.
Thank you.
And it 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 has been a pleasure and a privilege and God bless you all, and I hope you all have an amazing holiday season. Uh. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Night, Mayor.